And welcome to the Ashland Planning Board Meeting of October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Note that the meeting is being recorded. Before we get started, I just wanted to note that of our listed public hearings this evening, we will not be discussing ten to sixty Main Street. They have requested a continuance. That project will not be discussed. Also, three ninety-nine Union Street, which is the Starbucks Starbucks Restaurant, has also requested a continuance. So those two projects will not be discussed. We will be discussing one hundred Chestnut Street and five oh one Pond Street. But before we get to that, well, the first thing actually on our agenda is the clerk report. Kate, Kate, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, we had three public correspondence since the last meeting on ten thirteen. One of them was specific response given by the planning department. Two are of the a little more general that the clerk responds of the of the cases on the docket tonight. They want since August when you kind of started doing this. There was only one on five oh one pond received. Okay, not that was not recently, but just as a collect. And that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, then, next on our agenda, we are honored to have with us School Superintendent Jim Adams. The over the past months, as we start to look at these larger projects, the planning board has just general questions, I think, about how the schools relate to the work that we do and things. I mean, from my perspective, I'm sure the board will have other questions. What we should be keeping in mind as a planning board as we look at these projects in relation to the school system, to put in its most general terms. So I'm sure the planning board will have some questions, but Jim, do you have just some general general thoughts you would like to make before taking questions?
Sure, Peter, do I have access to share something?
Yes, a hundred percent.
I just want to share.
You are now, you're now a co-host.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me start by just saying, you know, I'm I'm one of those individuals who's constantly tracking our enrollment. And when I say constantly, I mean daily. Because we we have had in my fourteen years, but nine as superintendent. We've had a tremendous amount of transient population, like a lot of move-ins, move-outs throughout the year. And actually, come January, typically, when when we get a little bit of summer season, if you will, in Brazil, we will will tend to get a few more students coming in to our community as well. And so it's something that I monitor closely as it looks, as we look to projects that that you're going to be entertaining throughout the time. It it's important to know how it impacts us. So I I'm just going to show a screen of of where we are in terms of our enrollment. I did send this to Peter today. Can everyone see that? Okay? Yeah, just you should see some colors here.
Yes.
This is just specific to our our enrollment. At the end of last year, which is obviously twenty-one, twenty-two, in our school year of two thousand and twenty-two. This is updated. It says nine nineteen. I apologize, but I know I updated it because I changed the the title up top. This is actually updated as of of today. And you'll notice, before I get into this, that that we're we're down about twenty-seven total students from the end of last year to the beginning of this year. And as I always tell school committee, where I'm quite concerned is that a lot of families are still keeping their kids home, if you will. Fifty-three kindergarten less fifty-three. Last year, we ended at two twenty-nine. And we have fifty-three less just at this point in time. Concerns me that next year, that first grade class is going to grow significantly. And that's actually happening in a couple of other communities. I just had a conversation with Jeff Marsden, who was the superintendent of Medfield. And he was predicting about two-ten as well in his kindergarten, and he's at one-seventy-five. So I don't know if if families are red-shirting, if you will, they're they're kindergartners for this year, but but we're, you know, we'll keep an eye on this as we move into next year because it impacts a lot of things for us. It impacts our budgeting.
Anybody that knows, there's nobody being heard on Zoom and WACA is not broadcasting. So they're all silent over Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Excuse me, Jim.
Yeah, no worries.
I think we also heard Mark's comments. Thank you, Mark, for piping up. Can everyone hear me on the planning board? Okay, Mark, Mark DeSoni, could you hear me, please? No. Kevin, Anna.
I can hear you. Is it possible that is Mark having specific issues with Zoom on his end? Or is it systemic to everyone else on the call? Can we ask others on the call?
We'll ask others.
I can hear everybody perfectly.
Me too.
Hi, guys. This is Paul from Cable. We are streaming. We're not broadcasting tonight, but we're streaming and we we have audio. Okay, so. Maybe maybe Mark's speakers, maybe there's something happening. I don't know.
Okay. Peter Magic, the market to Sony. Come back. I'm gonna, I think I can unmute him. Hold on. Mark. Hey, Mark.
Hey.
Hey, can you hear us?
That's it. Also on Zoom and WACA is not broadcasting on local cable to home.
So WACA is not.
Being heard anywhere on Zoom or cable home.
Okay, can you check your speaker, Mark? Because I've I've gone through the list of of attendees tonight, and everyone can hear. WACA is not broadcasting live. They are recording the meeting.
And streaming it on Facebook and YouTube right now, live.
And streaming it on Facebook and YouTube. Thank you, Paul. Mark.
Could you maybe post the post the link to that stream in the chat or something so Mark could see it and to see that it's out there?
I don't know if the chat is available.
Yeah, you're right. I'm not seeing a chat either.
No, the chat's disabled. Yep. Hey, Mark. Yep. Thank you, Mark. It's not gonna work. Yeah. Hey, Mark DeSoni, come back, please.
You see, it's not broadcasting. They've got the banner on the cable channel, and nothing's being heard on Zoom.
Do you have his email address? Can you send him an email?
I do have an email. I will shoot him an email. I'm sorry for the interruption.
You could write him a message on the Excel sheet that it's on his end.
It's a great idea, Todd.
Did Mark hang up?
No, he's still there.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, I just sent them the email. Obviously, Jim, you wrote that.
Did you send him any email with the link, Peter?
Uh, yes.
Um, Jim, do you want to, can you write, check your email for a link?
If he's paying attention to it.
Yeah, we could ask.
Audio on Zoom and ACA is still not broadcasting. So nothing can be heard on the Zoom platform. And ACA is not doing anything. So see a banner on the screen.
Peter, do you have a phone number?
I do not. Well, I I can go through all emails.
So we don't know if he is seeing the message, is that?
Yeah, I don't know if he's seen the message.
If we hold up a written sign, is it backward?
Tricia's talking, but there's no audio from her voice being heard.
So it's got to be something on his end.
And Jim Adams is talking, and his voice is not being heard. My voice is light up, but nothing's being heard.
It's backwards, but.
Okay, I can't really read that.
Yeah, we try it again.
Does anyone have any pigeons we can send?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I think that means one moment. I'm not sure.
Now, Tricia, it's not backwards on my screen.
Okay, I did a good job then.
That one was perfect. Peter, maybe if you log him out and then he has to log back in, it might work.
Okay. The Sony.
Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
He might, it might, something if he he tries to log back in.
Okay.
Clear it up, but.
Yeah, it might. If all else fails, just reboot, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just asked him to leave. By the way. And out of all the Zoom meetings, we've never had this encounter.
Blame it on me. It's easy to do.
It's funny, Mark. I'm trying to find his phone number.
Okay, he's not coming back on.
He doesn't seem like he's coming back on. I'm gonna try to call him.
So you found a number?
No, I'm asking a few people in town. Paul. I think at this point, though, we can try to move forward. Obviously, I emailed him and we're working on communicating. And it's being recorded, so.
Okay.
Okay, so you want me to continue?
Uh, please do.
Okay, no worries. Thanks. So, yeah, so so we're tracking this on a daily basis, obviously, but but I think what was important for for the from the planning board perspective is the following, right? So over the last ten years, we've seen a growth in town in the schools of about sixteen percent of population, which is a pretty significant number. And then what I broke out for you is this. Because I think as you're looking at it from a planning board perspective of bigger units and or complexes, if you will, we track where our students are coming from. Not just the residential neighborhoods, but for instance, in America, the Americas, Captain Ames, Joey and Drive, meeting as Pat. This is the, these are the lists of of areas that we've that we continually break down to see how things impacted the school. So like the most recent, if you will, would have been Ashland Woods or Cirrus Drive, right? And we don't have a metric that we can accurately rely upon when a developer comes in and says, I'd like to build three hundred bedroom units, if you will, right? There was, there was a spreadsheet that I think Tony Skiyavi used. You know, we're going back, what, ten years now, when Cirrus was originally being developed, that had an idea of how many students might come out of of the the complex once it was completed. But but we try to track it. So again, about twenty-three percent of our popular, or twenty-seven percent of our population, our student population, comes out of these, I think, eleven, ten or eleven complexes. And what you'll notice is, again, how it's broken out is obviously, you know, America Boulevard includes Queen Isabella, John Hancock Drive. So all those condo units. And it's significant, twenty-seven percent. Again, I said, I don't know if it's an anomaly, but you know, President's Row, that area across from Dunkin' Donuts on one thirty-five. You know, there's forty less students coming out of there this year compared to, you know, two thousand nineteen, twenty, which is interesting. And that's why we track it because, you know, we have a tendency to say, okay, are there empty apartments there? Are there empty condos and things of that nature? Cirrus, for instance, is up nineteen students from in in three years. I I I want to say, if I remember correctly, it was probably in the seventies that they anticipated we would have coming out of there initially. But that has not come to fruition yet. Fifty-two is the largest group that we've had out of those those apartments up there. So when it comes to the planning board and you're looking at projects, I wish I had a metric. If you if I if you would ask me, Jim, what what would you like from us? It would be, is there a real good metric that can help us determine over the course of of a number of years, how many students potentially could be coming out of 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 these complexes or larger building complexes? Because we have to plan for that as much as we can. So for instance, last year, we had, and it and it varied. It wasn't just in specific, you know, condo units or apartment units, but we had twenty-plus extra first graders that we didn't anticipate, which would have been another teacher. And so the more we track the data, the better off we are in terms of making sure we have appropriate personnel to meet the students' needs. That being said, capacity-wise, when we're looking at our buildings, we are, if you go, if we go back up here, you'll see I I haven't broken out. So Mindes Warren currently has six hundred and forty-six students in it. You have to remember, we we purchased some modulators. So we've got two, four, six, two, four, six classrooms in the modulators currently to help offset our growth. Because Warren is only built at capacity for five hundred and ninety students. So we've had to build on to that. As we look at those modular units, potentially down the road, they were refurbished units to begin with. They gave us a five-year shelf life. We're we're past that five-year self-life. We're we're keeping those together with Band-Aids. So what does that look like potentially? Are we thinking down the road, we should be looking at a new Warren? Are we thinking that we need to add on to Warren a permanent structure versus these modulators? Those are all conversations we're having internally, and that will be, you know, moved from John Murray, our director of facilities, to Michael Herbert and his group when, as they're looking at potential capital items down the road. We certainly have repaired them. They're in good shape, not great shape. But as, you know, we look at our student population, we're going to continue to need those modulators and or that space. The Mindes School now, hopefully all is well, and we're in a new Mindes come next September. But we're currently at six hundred and forty students. Six hundred and forty-one, the max currently is six forty at at the old Mindes. We have built the school for six thirty-five. But based on estimates, we're we're going to be okay there. We don't want to get in the situation where we didn't, if you go next door to Hopkinton, where they built a new marathon school and they had to go back to town meeting twice so far to add on to that school. Because their growth has been exponential compared to even to ours. The middle school, six hundred and eighty-two students. It's the largest they've ever been. They have a big class, if you notice, it's two hundred and forty-two students in the eighth grade, who will then ascend next year to the high school, who loses one seventy-seven. So there's almost a seventy-student difference going up to the high school. Now, I had a conversation with this principal today, Kelly St. Kurt, at the high school. And while the school was built for a thousand and fifty students, that doesn't take into account, excuse me, it doesn't take into account classrooms that we've had to utilize as we've created dedicated special education programs, right? So so general classrooms that were built back in two thousand and four through two thousand and seven, when they were building the building, did not take into account what our population was going to look like in terms of students and in our our learning profiles. Therefore, we've had to take four or five classrooms to develop in-house specialized programming, which has taken away space for these seventy students who are coming up to the high school. Doesn't mean we need to add space. It means we have to continually be creative with how we use our space. Similarly, you know, admin, you know, myself, I've I've moved six times since I've been superintendent because we were in classrooms. And as the middle school got larger in terms of population, that's where our class, our our office space was. We've had to move out of there so students could have a classroom space. So it it's a, it's a, it's a puzzle yearly with our enrollment and trying to figure out what it looks like. So from a planning board perspective, having, let's see, I'll stop turns, having, you know, an idea of what projects are coming down the pipeline is critically important to us. Like, are they one-bedroom, two-bedroom? And then having a metric provided to us to say, we anticipate twenty-two kids coming out of of a project this of this scope. I don't know how accurate those are. I've I've gone online and looked at a lot of other districts and how they're trying to measure that. And I don't, haven't found anything that I think is a real viable tool. But, you know, when I look at your roles, playing board, my role as superintendent, and then that communication with finance committee, as well as the select board and and the town manager, to determine how are we going to put kids in classrooms? It's it's a challenge, for sure. So I'll stop right there because I, that's the enrollment component of things. And I know there'll be questions, but my thing really was, I just want to emphasize that when you come across bigger projects, certainly reach out to us. And if you can find a tool that says, hey, this is what we think is going to happen, that certainly helps us plan in the future for our staffing and our budgeting. And I know you can't predict it either. Like I said, I think Cirrus originally was probably close to eighty students. And we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet. And hopefully, we won't, to be honest with you. I think we are pretty tapped out in terms of space at this point in time. I don't want to say the inn is full, but inn's pretty full.
Thanks, Jim. Are there questions from the planning board? That Jim, more specific questions that Jim can try to tackle?
I I do have one, Tricia.
Yep, we're solid.
So, Jim, I I think I remember that prior to building Newman's, the the prior to, or maybe as part of the process with the MSBA. Yeah. Wasn't there a a comprehensive study of of the town? And can you, can you tell us, because you said that you guys are deliberating? What were the conclusions of that relative to new buildings or capital expenditures? what were the conclusions of that relative to new buildings or capital expenditures for schools into the future?
Yeah, good question. It, it was called the feasibility study is what we entered in. So that I do remember going back to town meeting, uh number of years ago, we'd asked for a million dollars or thereabouts to, to actually perform a comprehensive feasibility study of the Mindes project specifically. But we did previously to that have a look at all of our buildings and not only for, for enrollment purposes, but maintenance purposes, right? What do we need to do in order to keep our buildings uh and uh up and running, safe, secure, um heated, you know, in appropriate teaching space? And really the conclusion that came out of it is we've got a couple of schools that probably over time should have been taken offline, the Pittaway School. Um you know, we've invested a lot of money in it, um and it's for the purpose of the preschool. It's working well, but it's a older building, the nineteen twenties, that, that potentially could have system failure that we're gonna need to, to consider um fixing. And, and when you're looking at boilers, you're talking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that, in addition to Warren, you know, in terms of our size, that's where the modulators initially came out of, like that conversation previous to the feasibility study, when we did a, a study of our buildings themselves and the growth in the town. That's where we ended up having to, to add in the modules onto uh the Warren School. But Mindes was in such disrepair, uh that was the one that took priority for us with the MSBA. Uh and then the others um are, uh how do we continue to maintain those buildings? For instance, the high school. Um while everyone still calls it the new high school, it's, it's no longer new. Uh and honestly, it's in need of a, a roof. Um and those are, you know, those are pretty large expenditures um for the capital uh of, of the town. Um we do not have a dedicated, you go back before my time. And, and again, so past fourteen years ago, there used to be a capital line item just for schools on the school budget. That was moved away uh many years ago. And so we've always relied upon at town meeting, some of the free cash or a uh dedicated amount set aside uh at, at town meeting, under the town manager's budget uh for capital projects, which we basically would, would sit and have a conversation with the town and the schools uh and all the departments to say, okay, what is the most critical work that has to be done? Uh sometimes the schools were on the bottom of the list, right? And that's, that is what it is. Um so, you know, really to answer your question, it's, it helped us identify the Mindes School, the modulators, and understanding that some of our systems are really old and that we need to start focusing on you know, replacing them and or uh having a, a clearer maintenance program.
Okay, thank you. So, so there's no, there's no uh conclusions from that study and what, what has transpired since then? Uh as to, as to, let's say, what the next five years, uh whole four?
Yeah, well, the conclusion was we needed a new Mindes, and that's, that's how we got into the MSBA pipeline. We are in the process of creating a five-year plan. Um we've had a lot of turnover, if you will, as well, within our facilities. Again, since I've been there, John Murray is my fourth director of facilities um and maintenance uh for the schools, but it was a shared position initially with the town. Uh and now we've separated and John is just focused on schools. Uh so there's conversation that's now occurring between the school side and the town side, developing a five-year plan for the buildings. So that is in the process.
Okay, thank you.
And I, thank you, Tricia. I had a couple of comments and questions. First, I, I'm thrilled that you're here. Um I think this is exactly the kind of conversation we should be having as far as planning. And as you might know, um Jim, we're in the process of discussing a comprehensive plan process with um the select board. And I can see this type of presentation from you being really central to both the services and facilities element within a comprehensive plan as well as education. So I'm thrilled that you're here and I think this is great, a great starting point for us as a planning board to get kind of educated, no pun intended, and up to speed and prepare for the comprehensive plan. The other comment I'll make is, looking at that chart, there's a story there. We may not know exactly what's behind it, but there is a story, right? Some of the speculation, at least for me, is I'm reacting to an article that Yolanda from the select board sent me. I think she sent it to a couple of um a couple of folks about whether the COVID crisis, if you will, has shifted because of remote work. People are definitely leaving the city for the suburbs. There's flight to the suburbs, right? Over the last couple of years, it sounds like we're part of it. It sounds like our neighbors are part of that. Um and I wonder if you're seeing that the way I'm seeing it, because when I look at that data, I see a little bit of that flavor. And then the other thing with the multi-apartment complexes, that chart, and I should say that I live in one of them. I live at Meeting House Path. And as a single working mom, um I can tell you that if I was moving to Ashland, I would be moving to a place like Meeting House, exactly where I live, because I, I can't afford it anywhere else in Ashland. So logically, it makes sense to me that the families with kids would be moving to this, to these types of apartment complexes or developments. And logically, it makes sense, sense to me that they are leaving the city and moving to the suburbs for the remote work, open, you know, open space, all that. So I wonder if you're seeing that, if you agree with that, if it's, you know, how, how do you interpret this from your, from your chair?
I think it's more nuanced than that, to be honest. Uh I think when we're looking at the development in Ashland itself, right? I mean, we, in the last fourteen years, ten years, we've had tremendous growth in terms of building, not just in complexes, but I, I would be curious to see how many single-family uh residents have been built in the past ten years in, in Ashland. How many co- like neighborhoods, if you will, and for lack of a better term, have been built? And, and how many kids are coming out of those areas as well, right? I mean, we're still seeing development uh where we have in the past few years, where there are bigger homes and there are three or four kids coming out of there. Um so it, I, I don't want to say it's just um a factor of, of affordability, but I would agree with you a hundred percent that if we go back nine years ago, when we started having conversations about an override in this community, uh we were talking a little bit about how Ashland is one of the uh largest condo unit complexes uh in the state and in Metro West, right behind Acton over here where I live. And it's that we see again, twenty-seven percent of our population, students are coming out of, of these complexes. It's, I, I don't know how tapped out we are uh in those um, in those complexes, uh but and I also, I'm very hesitant. I, I didn't know where you're going with the story component. Because I'm always hesitant about stories in terms of data I share, specifically with regard to uh our complexes, uh and who's coming out of our complexes. Uh and, and uh the resources that are, are maybe necessary in these complexes. Because I, I think across the entire Board of Ashland, we've grown tremendously in population. I think our schools, you know, again, uh I'm speaking obviously as the superintendent, but I'm quite proud of what we've done in our schools and continue to do in our schools, in our system. And over, you know, these fourteen years uh that I've been here, that we're still continuing to achieve at a very high level with a very um diverse population that changed. The Ashland changed so quickly. I don't think people realize in a five-year, six-year window uh in terms of our population. And it's a good thing. And it, but without having the resources to necessarily put that towards education, I'm thankful that select board and the finance committee and the school committee has been so supportive and Michael Herbert specifically, seeing and recognizing how quickly we were changing, not only from an enrollment standpoint, but from a diverse standpoint uh and a unique standpoint of our learners, that we're continuing to, to support them.
And, and I'll say, you know, as, as, as someone who grew up in Ashland, and went to Ashland High School in the nineties, and someone who came back to this area for the strong schools for my daughter, I very much appreciate your hard work on keeping the, the quality of the schools high. And I think that's part of our attraction, right, to city folk who are coming here with their kids. And, you know, to try to resolve kind of the, the data, right? Like, the more data we have, the more we know. Is there any effort that we can undertake? Or do we have some data already, maybe through some sort of, you know, I'm trying to think, like, when I enroll my daughter in school, I remember filling out forms, right? That were basic kind of demographic forms. Do we have anything like that, that's data-driven, that we can say, the folks that are moving here, why are they coming here? What is their income bracket? What is their attraction to Ashland? Either already kind of informed or something we can create over the next year that we can understand better this data and that story, if you will, as to why are people coming here?
Yeah, it's a good question, and some of it is uh data that we, we do collect because there, it's required from the Department of Ed. And there are some, there are some data, however, that it's inappropriate to be asked and, and, and then sharing out with the community. But in terms of looking at, okay, are the race and ethnicity of our community, how it's changed? Again, when I started, it was ninety percent white community, now down to a fifty-eight percent white community uh as being identified. You know, in terms of our, our free and reduced or low-income uh or, you know, high means population, that's increased dramatically as well. Um so, uh it, but it's hard to tell because of COVID to a certain extent, because we, you know, again, the state has passed that if everyone can have free lunch and breakfast this year, right? Um so we don't necessarily have all of the data we could, we could potentially get because families aren't willing to fill out the forms. There's still a pride factor and that kind of stuff. There's um, we still have some families who are you know, concerned about integration. Uh and so, so there are lots of components to, to what you're asking. Um but yeah, we are collecting that data and we are in a process of, of actually having I, I give a private example of our English language, uh speaking, right? So again, I keep harping on saying fourteen years ago. Well, fourteen years ago I started, so I have a, I have a baseline. We had less than fifty students uh who had English as a second, needed English as a second language here in um Ashland. We're two hundred and seventy-nine per. Uh and that's a significant population. Uh it moves us in from, from a low incidence to a, almost a high incidence population of English language laws. And, and that's, those questions we ask those families are, they're not comfortable in going to the Framingham schools, if you will. And there's nothing wrong with the Framingham schools. I'm saying that's, those are the comments that we hear. Ashland's a good community. It's an affordable community uh in certain areas, like you just said. And, and it's a good school system. And those things do drive enrollment, for sure.
And, and it makes sense to me. I mean, as an, as an English learner myself, in the Ashland school system back in the nineties, it makes logical sense to me. And as someone who, you know, I can see that within my own kind of Russian integrated community here in Ashland that I, the way I would frame it is I feel like Ashland, because of its high quality of education and easy trap, easy commuting to great jobs, is attracting a very diverse community that appreciates education. That's kind of how I would frame it. And I think it's one of the things that makes Ashland great to live in. I, I think the data you're presenting us would be really incredible to augment in the future with some of that diversity inclusion stuff that you're sharing with us. I think that would give us the community a much fuller picture of what this data is telling us, that story. And like I said, I, I really value that you're here to the, tonight, and I can see this fitting really nicely with the comprehensive plan discussions that we're going to be having as a community in the months to come.
Great. Thanks, Anna. Um Kate, you had your?
Yeah, um I, I wanted to, so we've been kind of tackling and we just have a lot of new things in front of us, but the um economic impact tool, that I think it's a goal to kind of be running that for all projects. And we know that schools are a large part of um how our tax dollars are used. So I, I think um Peter and Emma were doing some background work with the tool we have and deciding if that's the best way to go or make, make kind of a new, simpler tool. But I think um I would want to see about getting like, how can we get the most up-to-date like cost per student and things? Does that vary by grade? And how would we? Do that. And then I think kind of importantly, what's included and what's not. I know developers have presented um their own data, so I, I think you can go to the state and get a general cost per um student, but I, I don't know if that includes everything.
Yeah. Okay, it's a good question. And, and what I could tell you is the, the numbers that I share with the community, I do that every year with part of my budget. Uh I always talk about and what is published as the cost per pupil uh is, is really uh delineated from what we report to the state from our budget. So the state number is most accurate in terms of uh what we're reporting. Now, that being said, they lag about a year, year-plus behind. So if you were to go on the website currently, uh the Department of Ed website of the school profiles, uh you would notice you can pull up the uh cost per pupil. But it's a, it's a year, year and a half behind, because the way the, the state does their audit of, of our finances and what we're submitting, um takes some too long, in my opinion, but to get all that information into um their system uh and then to recalculate it. So by the time I set the budget in January, February for the schools, we'll have a new uh cost per pupil, but it's really a year, a year behind still. So the simplest thing one could do is take the budget that would pass at town meeting and divide it by the number of students we have enrolled, right? And that's, that's a simplistic way to think about cost per pupil. Uh so if you, if you did that, I think it would come out to be somewhere around, still around thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars, somewhere around. Uh that's just my guess. Somebody wanted to look at a thirty-seven million, nine hundred and seven thousand dollar budget divided by twenty-eight hundred kids, whatever that number is, that, I mean, that's your cost per pupil, right? You're ready. But what we know is, there are some kids as part of that budget who are cost more because of um their unique learning needs. Uh they may, they are not necessarily in the Ashland Public Schools proper, but they go to a, a specialized school. One of those students could cost upwards of three hundred thousand. So that skews the number to a certain extent as well, right? So, so we've got to be careful sometimes when we look at that data and say, it's all about, um you know, all kids are being treated the exact same way. That's not true. It doesn't cost us so, so if a kid moves into the community tomorrow and goes to Ashland High School, it's not going to cost us thirteen thousand dollars um to educate that child, even though that's our per pupil cost. We're already paying, we're already paying for those costs to begin. Those teachers are going to be there. Right? Um so it, if anything, it actually reduces the cost because we have more pupils taking up some of the, the, the expense. But to your point, I mean, it's posted, it, it's, the data is lagging for sure. Most simple way is to take what our budget is and divide it by the number of kids we have. Uh that would tell you what it is per pupil that we're spending.
And so the, the ones you talked about that are out of district, though, that is in your total budget. So we wouldn't, we would, we would be covering that.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we cover it. And, and again, there's the, the nuance of it, again, Kate, is that, that we get reimbursed for part of it, um for, for part of those students uh costs that are out of our community uh under that circuit breaker um reimbursement for, for out-of-district students. Uh we have, I think we have thirty-six kids right now currently uh who are, who are out of our out of district. I don't represent them on that sheet I showed here tonight. They're not on this list. These are only the kids that are physically in our school. But the budget includes the other students.
Okay, so to be fair, to get a number, we would have to get
Yeah.
your total enrollment.
Right. Yeah, so there are two. If you go on the website, the what, the, it, it's thirteen thousand, six ninety-one if you do not include that specialized cost. And it's fourteen thousand, eight hundred if you include the specialized stuff. And it's fourteen thousand eight hundred if you include the specialized stuff of students. So the state actually breaks that out for you.
Um, but I think we would want to be using not the year or year and a half old data, that's like, hopefully, yeah, so, so I think.
That's what I'm saying to you, if you took that current, I it's it's running typically right around fourteen thousand. Is the per pupil cost.
And that, so we just have to, I mean, hopefully, we can get that tool kind of up and running, and then I think with that, perhaps, um, it may be as simple as running what your data shows compared to what's a few complexes when, since we did use that tool. Are they at all accurate?
Yeah.
Um, I think that would be helpful, and then I think if you have ten years of data, I think you can still look at that to to help with some projections compared to what the developers have been good about bringing their own, and I think that's helpful, so. If if we run them and they start looking like developers, then we're, you know, a good long way of of solving, um. It doesn't necessarily solve anything, but I think telling the public what what an impact of these developments in all transparency as much as we can is helpful.
Sure, we, uh, in fairness too, we also run twice a year through the New England School Development Council, we we actually do projections uh which our first set of projections will probably come our way, this is for next year. Um, those in the end of December would be my guess. So that sheet I shared with you, you'll notice, uh, I also wrote a NASDAQ projection. So that's the number, those are the numbers that they anticipated us having. So that's, I'll just share it again, because I think it is important. For you to understand this component, so so right here, this NASDAQ, that's the New England School Development Council, they, we use them, and what they do is they come in, they look at the birthing rates here in in Ashland. Um, they look at historical uh trajectories of of students. And what you'll notice is they were predicting, this was as end of last year in April, they were predicting about a hundred and ninety-five kindergarten kids. So, and they're using a a much more um, you know, uh sophisticated lens than I am, and I I'm just gutting it by saying, listen, over ten years, this is what I've seen. And but there, they get it wrong too, so think about this right here. This is the the current eleventh graders, um, they anticipated two hundred and two, we've got two hundred and sixteen. So i- it's not an exact science, it's sort of, um, but we go through this exercise twice a year to help us hopefully project when we're setting our budget to meet the needs of the kids. Uh, we have had years since I've been superintendent where we've had to add staff at the beginning of the year, because all of a sudden we had twenty-five kids um pop into the Warren School. And and all of a sudden now class sizes were twenty-eight, twenty-nine kids um in the second grade, and that's totally inappropriate at that age level especially. Um, and we would add a staff member last second.
So currently, there's like four projects, one of them we haven't, um, I think it's not till November seventh, sorry, but I venture to say they're all going to bring school age children. Um, I think at least the three, we've had some conversations, they've given projections of that. So, I mean, you you don't live in town and you ha- and you're here late helping us, and thank you. So I'm I'm sure you don't pay attention to all the planning board projects, so is, I mean, what's the best way to communicate that to you? Or do you actually kind of get that anyway? And and I I think we should make sure we're doing our best job on that.
Yeah, no, I, that's a, that's a really valid question, and I think I started by saying, when there are bigger projects that are coming to fruition, and you get some potential numbers, I always think just shipping and ship them to me and say, hey, Jim, by the way, this project's going on. You know, it's a fifty unit capacity, there's twenty, you know, twenty-one bedrooms, and then there are thirty-two bedrooms. And what they're looking at is saying, okay, historically, we can look at, say, the Sears apartments and say, okay, the two-bedroom apartments account for seventy-two percent of the kids of the fifty-five kids that are coming out of there. So so we can figure that out mathematically, right? So that's important to me, and the 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 struggle, Kate, really is, we don't know what age level, right? I mean, that's, that's the struggle, we can say there's thirty more kids coming. Well, okay, that's all well and good, but if you spread out thirty kids among my five buildings, I'm good. But if you say, hey, by the way, Jim, there are thirty more kids going to the Warren School, now I've got to work, right? And that's, I don't think we can ever get that granular and figure that out. It'd be nice, but I don't think we can.
I mean, I I'd like to, I'd like, I trust math, right, above all else. So I I feel like the beauty of of the data that you're showing us is we can see trends and we can see, we we can, in fact, start to understand the objective facts of math as to what things mean. And if you're building, you know, affordability is important to us as a community, staying attractive and to folks who are moving in, strong education, all of these values. And so when we're building apartments of a particular size, the data does tell us some objective facts, which is that families may find specific affordability more attractive, families with kids may find specific affordability more attractive. I I think, I think that that data is already obvious. I think we just need to understand it a little bit more more uh in a in a more holistic way over longer data points. Um, it sounds to me like you're you're doing that process for this five-year strategic kind of plan. And and again, I'm thrilled that you were here because it gave me a very good introduction to what we as a community need to think about for for planning, for comprehensive planning, and what I as a planning board member need to think about, right? What kind of questions I might need to think about as projects are presented. Um, and I I really love the idea of us communicating better with the school system to say, hey, maybe we can even create like a standard language, project X is coming, it's presenting X X types of apartments of this size, this many FYI, and and it's helpful to you, it's helpful to us because you can then respond and give us some kind of rubric of what it might mean.
Yeah, more data, the better, right, for all of us.
Um, I have another thought, it's sort of, it's a little bit of a tangent, but the comprehensive plan, um, it looks like there's been a lot of activity and attention and support for this, so I believe it will be going forward. And I know um over time, like Marcelo started out saying, we have the um the study, and I know that you are not absent from studies, um, because it is really important to planning. So I I I'd like to just um maybe figure out the best way to use that as part of the comprehensive plan, if it is possible. It's certainly at least a data starting point that we should not ignore, right? We shouldn't, we shouldn't pretend we're at zero, I guess.
Yeah, it's completely available, I I mean, I certainly can chip off the the feasibility study as well as the comprehensive plan that, you know, our building analysis that we undertook, it's been five or six years now, but certainly willing to do that. I I can get that over to you. It might actually, I know one of the documents is on the, probably on the MINDS website for the new building, uh, that's there already posted. Uh, but I certainly can make sure we get the other uh documents we used uh to the planning board, for sure. Just making note of that.
Depot or Kevin, do you have any or questions that you had, or you just, uh, you're you're good with the information Jim's presenting? I mean, obviously, I think we can always contact him with more specific questions.
Absolutely.
Where to find him.
Yeah, no, yeah, absolutely, I mean, if you have specific questions as it relates to the schools and the enrollment and 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 building, you know, within your purview of the building projects and the building uh the facilities that we currently have, and what is it going to look like uh if we continue to grow? Uh, you know, I've said to Paul Kendall often, I I believe we're going to settle at a two-ten to two-fifteen per class. That that's what we're going to look like i- in Ashland moving forward. Um, we have two anomalies, we have two classes uh that are over two forty currently. Everything else is is below that. Um, we have two classes in the one-seventies, which is weird, the K in the twelve. Uh, I don't know where, again, I think the K is really out there, I think that number's going to be in the two hundreds next year as first graders, I just do. Um, based on all the data we've been looking at. But the rest of the classes are between that two-oh-five and two-twenty range, um, which is probably more normal for us.
J- Jim, one, one, one last thing.
Yeah.
Can can you gi- give us your opinion, uh, that there there was um a decision by the, by the select board and the town manager to put a hold on 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 housing, uh, were you part of that, and do you support on the basis of what you know the school system is is dealing with? Do you, do you, what was, was?
So are you referring to the sewer moratorium? Was it the sewer moratorium?
Yeah.
Was that what it was, not, I mean, I don't think that they didn't put a hold on building, did they, or was it just the sewer hookups?
Yeah, I think you're talking about the upcoming moratorium.
I think there's already, there's already a sewer moratorium.
Already in place, right?
The sewer more.
And there's discussion of the of the building one as well.
Yeah, well, basically, it's it's all, it's all connected, I just want to know your opinion and based on the data that that you handle, do you support that?
I did, yeah, I did. I I'd had a conversation, I don't know about the building one, Anna, to your point, but the sewer one, I'd had a conversation certainly you know, with Mr. Herbert, you know.
Okay, so I think.
He was asking about the schools, how we are, where we are in terms of enrollment, things of that nature.
Okay, I think, I think that's important for for everybody on on the board to know.
Yeah.
And and.
Kevin had his mic up for a minute there, so I want to make sure he gets a chance of.
Yeah, just, uh, it's all great data, appreciate the time. But you mentioned briefly that you you something about the the unit mixes at Sears. Actually, you have that data to that level where you know, you know, how many of the students come from the one bedrooms and the two bedrooms? And is that something, if you look at these projects early on, you know.
That's a great question. I don't know what units have two bedrooms and one bedroom, I, can I, can I actually take those fifty-five kids and tell you exactly what apartment number they are? I can, um, but I don't know if they're one-bedroom or two-bedroom apartments.
Okay.
Yeah, I I certainly could do that, yes, but but even when they they fill out their forms, they might say um thirty-three Sears Drive. Apartment one or apartment four, sometimes they just put thirty-three Sears Drive. So so to get that granular is really difficult, it probably could happen, I certainly could uh even call families, but it it would take a lot of work, for sure.
No, but even though you have it, it's great, we can look at a similar mix.
In theory, we could do like a random sample size.
Sure you could.
With the proper ethical kind of boundaries.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure that if we wanted to dig into that data, we could get it.
As a former accountant and auditor, you know, we could do those things, but.
And deep, I see Deepa took her microphone off, so do you want to have a question, Deepa?
Sure, Jim, um, thank you, it was a great presentation and knowing the other side of the coin. My one question is, um, all of us have seen so much change in this pandemic and has that repercussions in every field, right? People were in city, have moved off to kind of the suburbs and the data that you just shared, um, it's from obviously twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two. So were you tracking similar things prior to pandemic and were you seeing a similar growth? Or was this just this growth in these forty-five years that you noticed?
No, it's been a nine-year, ten-year growth, uh, it it's every year we've been growing at a three to, you know, three to four percent clip, um, pre-pandemic as well.
Okay.
I I'm actually shocked our numbers are not higher from the pandemic, to be honest. Um, I I would have thought this year, I I think last year our numbers were pretty high, and that was probably due to folks coming back, feeling a little more comfortable coming back into the schools, and this year leveled off, right? So I I would have anticipated even more this year. Um, we're down, and again, like I said, we're down partly because of the kindergarten, and I'm concerned about that, um, and how that might impact us next year. But, and that's part of the reason why I track it on a daily basis, um, is to make sure that we're ready for the next budget cycle, but I know we saw growth, we, I mean, the whole town, if you go back and look at the census, um, you know, ten years ago, compared to where it is today, you'll notice there was a tremendous amount of growth in the community itself. And and that impacted the the enrollment numbers.
And looking at the list, um, all those apartment buildings were, none of them were condos, but they're really rental properties. The boulevard obviously looks like they're a kind of owned properties there, right? They're not rental properties, so I wonder if there wa- there would be a difference between a rental property when somebody is looking for a job and moving out versus some, I wonder if that also adds to what's happened in this pandemic.
So I don't know, so like Joanne Drive typically would be, my guess is um more rental properties um up there. Uh, and you know, and and we've got almost a hundred kids i- in Joanne Drive. So I I, there is a mix for sure, right? And again, there there are affordable housing um options for families here in town. And 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 I do believe that, you know, anecdotally, the conversations I have is families do want to be here because they, you know, really trust our system, right? They trust our schools. And that's, you know, that's, and they and they feel Ashland is a safe community. And that's a, that's a really, you know, really powerful uh thing for families to say, uh, that they think this community is a really welcoming community and and is safe, um, so.
All great work, man, thank you.
And Deepa, just to share an anecdote, I live in a, in a condo at Meeting House, which is four units together. And my condo, I think, can give you that element of what's happening in my community at Meeting House, which is next door to me is somebody who left the city and moved next door to me, on the other side is a woman that owns two condos and rents one of them in the community down the street. And there, you know, my, the woman who moved next to me, you know, came with a child from the city looking for a quieter environment and primarily works at home. So I can see it right here on Meeting House, the exact kind of narrative that we're discussing.
Looks like there's a good mix there.
There is, yeah.
Yeah, so Jim, I appreciate your time, I'm sure we could easily fill up our normally very long planning board meetings, all with questions and information from you. But um I assume that should we have other questions or wish to have you back for an another round that you'd be willing to to do so?
Absolutely, and and if there's something specific in terms of the data that you're looking for me to dive into and for me to present to you, you know, give me enough time, and I certainly can can i- can dig that out for you. Things have gotten a teeny bit harder, uh, I have a new administrative assistant, Karen Johnson retired after thirty years. Um, and there's one person who knows everything about this community and about the school system, it's Karen Johnson. So tracking her down every once in a while now is is a always a task, but um certainly we can, we can get that data that you're looking for.
Great, thank you so much for joining us.
Welcome.
Really.
Thank you.
You got it.
All right, so, um, next urgent on our agenda is um the start of a public hearing list. Um, I mentioned at the beginning, um, that we will not be speaking about ten to sixty Main Street tonight, they have asked for continuance for just a very simple reason, Peter, do you want to fill fill us in?
Yeah, I think there was, uh, number one, I think there was a little bit of a mix up on dates. Uh, number two, I think, uh, they are going to meet with us on November seventh. Uh, that was the Monday that hi- everyone highlighted that they can meet uh in Town Hall in a face-to-face meeting to talk about uh scale, size, massing of the project. And so with that said, uh, they are looking, uh, they asked for a continuance uh to a to a new date possible. So, uh, I think it's, you know, and I don't see any issues with granting them a continuance uh to a date. I do want to make note, um, our next upcoming meeting is going to be on November tenth. On November tenth, we do have um the public hearing opening for our new project at Shaw's. Uh, and then we also will have the public hearing for the gay moratorium. Uh, and with the agenda uh stacking up already, um, and knowing that they'll be meeting with on the seventh, meeting with us on the seventh. Continuing them to our first meeting, which will be on December first, which I think I've been able to confirm with everybody with the date that was best in December. I think that could be a possible date to move them to.
Okay, so, um, so at this time, we'd be looking to move them, we can just say for to the first meeting in December until we confirm that 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 is what we're going to do. Um, so I assume there's no questions about that from.
I ask a clarifying question, are we still doing a meeting with them to talk about design next week?
On the seventh at six, six P M. at Town Hall?
Is that a public meeting?
It is a public meeting.
Meeting, so I think we should continue it, that's a good point, let's continue the public hearing to. Meeting, so I think we should continue it. That's a good point. Let's continue the public hearing to December, excuse me, to November seventh. Which will be in town hall, pub, you know, uh. No, it's not this Monday, excuse me, and then this Monday coming up is the first. So it's a week.
It's two weeks.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, so be the November seventh. So theoretically, you can continue then for the seventh. That will be advertised public meeting, open to the public in town hall in person. And then from that point, we'll most likely continue them out until, um, December, the first meeting.
So as, as I understand it, there's a possibility we, whatever we're continuing from today for them. Would we try to hear that on the seventh or eighth? Or would we then continue it again?
Well, I think we're gonna have a special, but the meeting is special, uh, concerning.
Okay.
And I think we're only gonna have a limited time period and so.
Okay.
A, a, a focus meeting per se. So I think tonight we were gonna hear about. Um, we're gonna hear about the environmental.
Yeah.
Aspects of the site. Uh, so I think that component of the hearing, it would be moved.
Okay, yeah. I think that's what I was trying to like, understand if we, we have any interest in consolidating those and using that focused meeting on this project. It sounds like that's not gonna, that's not.
I think this is a special one-off meeting. We're trying to move them in person, and I think everyone is, is, is giving enough. Uh, their, their schedule, which is obviously a good fact. Uh, so unless. Anybody wants to change anything, I think, uh, that's what I would do.
Yeah, I think this meeting that we're planning on for the seventh has been, always been envisioned as a very specific focus. Um, so that we can, uh, really look at this issue of massing, which is incredibly hard to do vocally. Um, on, uh, on Zoom. So we'll keep it really focused, but I think, I think it is the right thing that we take the content. That we were expecting to talk about today and be moving it to the first weekend or the first meeting in December. But for now, unless there's any other questions. I will make a motion that we're continuing the public hearing for ten to sixteen Main Street, special permit and site plan review. To Monday, November seventh at six P M.
I'll second it.
Okay, and a roll call vote?
Gavangatai.
Anna Testman, it's K I.
I.
From Jersey guy.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that is continued. All right, then next on our agenda is the, um. One hundred Chestnut Street Site Plan Review, um, continued from October thirteenth. Uh, Peter and Emma obviously sent out the most up-to-date information, uh, shortly before this meeting. And I believe we're at. Kind of the dotting of the I's and the crossing of the T's. In this with the many iterations we have gone through, but I think, Peter, um, I assume possible for you to bring up. The, the latest documents so that we can scroll through them and see and any changes. And understand any changes that were made since we reviewed it the last time.
Sure. So thank you so much, everybody, uh, and. And, and thank you to Emma, who's not here, because she's worked tirelessly on this with me. Uh, I did send this, we've sent this out a bunch of times. The applicant has taken a look at it. Um, and at this point, uh, the last, uh, and, and I thought, I sent this out yesterday. Uh, as, as a, it was all color removed, I'm sorry. Uh, however, today Emma went through. Um, and everything highlighted in green are from changes that have been made, uh, since, you know, at our last meeting. Uh, everything, excuse me, in purple are new edits. Um, and then. That is the biggest piece of, of, of what's happened. Obviously, we did create a. Site plan application, which the findings are a little bit different, just as we manipulate them for both parts. However, I just wanna make note the conditions are, uh, are, are a hundred percent the same, uh, on both decisions. So I can kinda scroll through this and Tricia, let me know how you want me to kind of, um, organize this discussion. Uh, but like I said, the changes are the color, uh, and those are obviously the newest in purple and the oldest in blue. Um, here's a purple, for example.
I believe. Um, my suggestion, open to, um, comments from the planning board. Um, is to scroll through, looking for those new changes to make sure we like how they're worded, but. If anyone has gone through it again on their own and has something else that they wanna talk about, that. You know, from a recent viewing of it, then make sure we stop and take a look at those things as well. So. Is there anything? Peter, Peter has reached. Well, point D, I don't see what number.
Uh, excuse me, this would be on page five, six, uh, point D under, uh, five, facts and findings. Uh, and this is pertaining to, sorry, I'm gonna highlight, uh, repayment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be going to the American Community Association. Uh, the new language states that the permit shall, uh, excuse me, the payment. Said payment shall be made prior to issuance of a building permit in the first building. I have confirmed this payment and timing with the applicant. I know the McDowell family, uh, based on developments. Tonight, uh, so, uh, Roy and Todd and Roy, please feel free and, 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 and comment. Uh, when you be, obviously based on this.
Yeah, we, we agree to that, Peter.
Any questions from the planning board?
Nope.
Are there any, um, anything we've skipped over that someone would had another comment about? Okay, then we will continue. Please jump in if we're going past something where you do have a comment.
Uh, history. Uh, this is a point that, um, we came, just as a clarification. Uh, this is referencing the original covenant, uh, which is dated October fifteenth, two thousand and two. And recorded as such, uh, and this is just a, uh, a scribbled error which was, uh, corrected. This is the live covenant that is, uh, the driving. Uh, parking. Uh, this is just the clarification of the parking spaces for the special permit as added.
Yes, I think I asked to put that in because we had talked about that we're, we were approving. A reduced number of spaces, but we never actually called out in the decision, um, what the required number of spaces were. So in order to understand our reduction, I guess.
Everyone okay with me moving on? Go on once, twice.
Yes.
Uh, this is an element, uh, that was talked about at the last meeting. Concerning the parking study, uh, one element that's been added and that shall be done within twenty-four months of the date of the last. Uh, occupant, the, the issuance of the last occupancy, uh, permit.
I'm fine with that.
This element was highlighted, uh, because I think we were just trying at the last meeting, we were talking about U V, uh, E V parking spaces. Uh, I know I taught, you and I went back and forth on this. I think we were counting spaces. I came up with sixty-two. Obviously, I think that was represented in the plan, um. Uh, Todd, uh, you, since you and I were, were, were working on this together, are, are you okay with those?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So I will un-highlight that at a, at a further degree. I, I mean, you know, so. This is, uh, concerning the, that, the electric and it says the, uh, the blue says the upness of conduct. Excuse me, construct all buildings with H V A C, which, uh, will utilize, uh, electric heat pumps. Uh, and all resident u- units shall have, uh, shall include electric cooktops.
So I think I had one comment, maybe that didn't make it in there, Peter, which would just be to add. Construct all buildings with H V A C and domestic hot water. Which is a part of the letter that you, that is mentioned, just on, on, on I. So it's, it's in there, but it seems that it should be a part of this point.
So. Is that to include all the commercial spaces as well? That's something we wanted to talk to the board about. We, go ahead, Peter.
No, I think, and I, I, this is a point that we're discussing, so I just kinda wanted to set the table, but yes. I think, and, and Todd, you can chime in any point, is that we always talked about, um, having, you know. H V A C, electric heat pumps, electric cooktops, um, and these for the residential units, do these pertain to the commercial? Um, how do we wanna kind of frame the discussion? But, um, I believe it is in, um. Based on, would like to have some gas connection for some utilities for the common area. Todd, if you want to take the comment, conversation further and explain to the, to the planning board, I, I think this is the time to do that.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Um, we talked with, uh, our team and some of the, I think we, when we discussed this with the planning board previously. Some of the items, we, we do feel will need some gas connections to the project for, set, for example, the gas fire pits in the courtyard. The, the grills that the residents be able to use in the courtyard, the pool heating, um, so, I mean, those aren't really in the building. Those are on the exterior, but those items, the, the one thing we also wanna be able to provide is. Uh, gas connections for the commercial space, as we don't know what will go in there in the future. We'd like to be able to keep that option open. And I don't know if there's anything in here that really precludes us from that, but we just wanted to be. To bring it up and have a discussion to make sure everything's above board on that. Sorry.
No, go ahead, Roy.
Roy, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to say.
I think that was Marcelo.
Yeah, Marcelo.
You know, I was gonna say, just from the point of view of a building of this size, I think that request is absolutely reasonable. That's all.
Okay. Anna, were you, did you have something?
I, I just think we, we, we can say that. We can say that there's gonna be. Specific gas to the grills and outdoor fireplace area. Um, and I think the word residential here already takes care of, of the other issue.
I don't think we have residential in the. In the. I mean, I, does this cover it? I guess what, and my, my comment was about domestic hot water. Um, so will, will the, will the commercial parts use H V A C as part of the heat pumps? Is that part of what you're talking about as well? Or are you looking to pull that? Out, that, like a different H V A C system for?
We wanted to be able to keep our options open, not knowing what the exact end user will be.
Hmm.
Um, so that was just one of our concerns, is we wanted to be able to, you know, utilize this commercial space in the best way possible. And, um, you know, there, and even for temporary space heating, it's when it's before it's occupied, but, um. We wanna be able to accommodate almost whatever comes across and not be like, sorry, we can't accommodate you, so you don't have any gas in this, this area.
I mean, if, if I could, the, the whole purpose of that language is to be consistent with. Our town meeting, um, commitment to net zero, right? And so the kinds of businesses we wanna be able to bring in, we, we, we want as much as possible to, to, to motivate. This kind of use by all, right? So could you tell us a little bit more as to why commercial? What is the concern? That commercial clients would, would not want HVAC or would, like, are you?
Well, one, one of the concerns is, I'm not saying we're gonna have a restaurant, but. The concern is if we don't bring gas into the building as we're building it, and for whatever reason down the road that I don't even know the answer to. It'd be a shame to go ripping up parking lots and cutting sidewalks and everything else to bring gas into a building because we need it. So when, you know, we're more than happy to do domestic hot water that's electric, the apartments are electric. Uh, the vast majority of everything is like, we just want the possibility. And it may never come to four, for sure, for the swimming pool, the grills and the fire pits. But just to have gas dubbed into the commercial component of the building in case of some future need, there may never be, but. It'd be kind of a shame not to have it there if we need it.
So I, I don't have an issue with building it for need. But I really wanna commit. I, I wanna make sure that we as a planning board have some say when that project comes in, that, that commercial project, to suddenly turn it on. I mean. Ultimately, I think our goal as a community is to, is to get more sustainable and, and start to move away from this, right? So I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I'm, I'm not convinced that. This is the way to go. If, if the rest of the board disagrees, I, we can certainly make that change.
Maybe you could chime in, but I worked on a lot of commercial buildings and there is nothing called hundred percent electric right now. Um, there is always that small component of, um, requirements for gas. But I'd be very surprised that we can to hundred percent electric. So it feels like it's a reasonable ask. Um, at least I know I'm working recently on a commercial building and. It's a LEED certified building and it's really hard to say that it's gonna be hundred percent electric. Our H V A C engineers are having a backup of that gas line. So, um, Marcel, I don't know if you have another different experience than that, but.
Oh, yeah, all of them. Uh, in, in, in. There, there's one thing, and I, I understand, Anna, where you're coming from, but I disagree with, 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 with the method. I, I think we, we, the, the objective is, is, is good, but, but. I mean, you, you know, we, we've talked about this in other, in other venues. I, I just seen at zero in, in a little different way. I, I think it's very dangerous to, to preclude gas in many situations. Uh, there's, uh. There could be, you know, electrical blackouts too, and, 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 and we're talking about the residential units, they already, uh, accepted that. It's, it's, it's impossible to determine what kind of commercial space you're gonna have in the future and precluding, precluding having gas there. It seems to me like, um, it seems, it would be like myopic in my, in my, in my view.
Yeah, and.
Uh, because, because the, the other thing is that, yeah, we want something as a talent. But we were very specific requesting additional commercial space in this building and we wanted to be successful. Because otherwise, we, we are kind of shooting ourselves in the foot. It wouldn't, it wouldn't, it would, it wouldn't get us there. Do you, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I, 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 I can see what you're saying and I, I, now that I've, we've talked through it, I, I agree with that. I think we should allow, you know, the capacity to, to build for it. I, I do. I do wanna think kind of long-term about how we can. I agree a hundred percent. We should allow the capacity to be there.
And I think this, 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 that's here is something that's gonna be developing in the town slowly. Uh, we, we, I think it's dangerous to try to get there right away. Because you don't know, you don't know what's gonna happen. You don't know where the source of electricity is gonna be. Uh, whether it's gonna be plentiful or not. I mean, you, you, you can hope that it will be.
Right.
But I, I think there's, there's, there's steps to it.
So how does this need to be rephrased? I guess between. And Todd, perhaps, how does this? Please.
I think if we just simply add, uh.
I, I said Peter some language earlier today.
Just for the sake of discussion, I think, I think I just cut and pasted it from.
Oh, okay.
Just for the lack of, uh, writing something. I just pasted it. So I think this is exactly what the, the, the question is, the, the context is, is. Gas connections are allowed for heating the swimming pool, gas, uh, excuse me, drills. Uh, fire pits generators, if any, as well as the use in the commercial space in both buildings, end quote.
Is, is the building. Going to be, are the commercial spaces going to be fit with the, um, heat pumps? And then if needed, the gas connection is there to bolster. What they may need, or is it, nope, we're just going gas right away with the commercial space?
That's kind of what, what I would prefer as well, that brat. I want it to be there in case other things fail. In case it's the only option, but ultimately. Where we're aiming should be also available. We're aiming away from gas.
Like, if it's a, if it's an insurance office and they really don't have a lot of heating, cooling needs or special needs, it would be. It could do, utilize the electric heat pumps, or if it is some kind of special condition, which I couldn't even name. It would be okay for it to be gas. Is, is that acceptable?
I think. Go ahead, Roy.
I think it's our intention, if all being equal, we'd rather just do electric everywhere. But for some unknown reason, if we have a potential great tenant that needs a. But for some unknown reason, if we have a potential great tenant that needs a gas for whatever reason. We'd like not to, not be able to lease a space because we can't accommodate it.
And when we're designing these spaces, we're right now just designing them as a white shell, a white box. And as we progress with our plans and hopefully attract potential tenants. We'll then bring those plans for what will fit in those spaces as we get, as we acquire those resident, uh, those tenants.
You're saying committing to providing both. You're not willing to do until you know who your. Tenant is. In other words, can we frame this as commercial tenants will be given. HVAC and gas connections, like can both be provided?
Well, we're not, when Todd says vanilla box, it's just really going to be an open shell. Because there's no sense trying to fit out anything until you know who's going to go in there, what they're going to do with it. You know, they may want a higher ceiling, a lower ceiling, demising walls, and we have no idea. Because if you're talking about 10,000 feet to someone take 5,000, 2,000, 3,000. You just don't know. We don't know yet what their specific needs are, so it's.
Right, but if, but if one of them is cheaper, you're going to do the cheaper one. If they don't care one way or the other.
But I will say this, in talking to our architects and our HVAC engineers. There's no cost savings for us going gas heat. So we, we're not motivated to go to gas. We'd frankly rather just stay electric, but we don't, we don't want to preclude it. If it's going to make a difference for a particular tenant that we don't even know who that is right now.
So is it, is it a matter of just adding to the end of that, um, highlighted red area? As well as for use in the commercial spaces in both buildings? If specifically needed by the intended tenant or something like that, would that? Give?
I'm not sure what that, I'm not sure that gives us a lot of, of a difference, Tricia. I mean, it, it will be fine. I mean, I'll be fine with it. I, I think, I think what's been described here in, in terms of how commercial space is provided, that's pretty standard span, standard, um, way of doing it. Uh, a tenant will not want, I mean, if at all possible, a tenant would not want any finishes, typically. Owners. Uh, give the tenant sometimes just. Exposed studs and people come and finish it because they want to do their business the way they want to. So that's pretty standard procedure. Um, so I'm not sure.
So Marcelo, would you, would you keep this text the way it is then? Do you feel that fulfills what we're?
I, I'm fine with it because, I mean, I, I want those commercial spaces to be successful. I don't think, I, I think that. The, 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 uh, if you look at all the square footage of the project as a whole. I, I wouldn't kind of, um, um, start separating things. This is a very small portion of the project, um, and, and I really want it to be successful. I don't know what owner, what, what. What, what type of tenant that, that they're going to get. But if for whatever reason. And. That tenant needs. Gas or for, uh, nobody knows. I, 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 I think it's kind of unfair to preclude that possibility.
I think, I think we're all agreeing that we want the gas connections to be there. What I'm suggesting is that we, we frame it in the context of our, our preference. Whenever possible is to motivate the use of non, of something else. Uh, but the gas connection will be available for, for commercial use. I think that's kind of how I'm envisioning this section, that we're very clear that. The planning board's intention is to. If at all possible, to use. HVAC and domestic hot water for all commercial spaces. However, gas connections are allowed. That's sort of how I see the section.
So how, is there a simple? Tweak that we can put in there? I mean, is it just, like I said, at the end of both buildings, is it just?
Maybe right before, maybe right before that gas connections language, we can say. The preference is for commercial. Uh, buildings to also have HVAC. And domestic hot water. However, gas connections are allowed.
Yeah, it, it's about the preference is to use electric heat pumps for commercial spaces.
Thank you.
But gas connections are allowed. And, and complete the rest of the sentence is that.
Exactly.
Kind of notes the planning board's preference, but. Allows. Whatever will happen with these commercial spaces.
Correct.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yep, so. So, uh, Peter, it's the pref, the preference.
Did we say basis of design instead? Basically, should we say basis of design is? System is electric heat pumps? And then have. If it helps.
I understand what you mean, Deepa, but I'm not sure. It's. Common language.
So you, we want to make this appear as if it's a planning board decision.
Um, hold, hold on, Peter, don't add. I, I think it's too much, right? I think it's just. The. The preference of the board shall be for. You need a four in there. Shall be for the applicant. No, shall be for. The applicant. To use. Electric heat pumps. For the commercial spaces. However. Gas connections are allowed. Is that? Acceptable?
I, I think that's great. And you know, what I'm envisioning again, we're, we're. We're, we don't know what the future holds. We want to give commercial tenants some flexibility, but I'm, I'm envisioning as we. Get closer and closer to the vision of net zero as a community, there might be conversations that our economic development folks, our sustainability folks are having with. Tenants as they come into Ashland. I think this language will give us that. That ability to have those discussions and to say, welcome to Ashland. Can you do this?
So take out.
Right? So that's really all I'm looking for. I understand we, we're not in the business of preventing commercial use that might require gas connection. Um, and I really like where Marcelo's point is that, you know, electric may not always be reliable. So. Um, but I don't want to shut out. Electric.
Yeah, so I, I think just Peter erased that end quote. Um, after buildings. Yep. And. I don't know what the little crossed out E is at the beginning. If we.
Ah, those are track changes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's, well, that'll be cleaned up. That's just because I, I, I did, I, I started a new sentence.
Okay.
Unless you want me to cook to the, the, it should be.
Nope. So is the, is the board? Okay with that language on this point? Assume yes. Good. Marcelo's nodding. Thank you, Marcelo.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
All right, good. Okay, then, let's move on if there's no.
This is about the white roofs, the flat roof, the, uh, the flat portions of the roof shall be white. Energy efficient products, white roof increase energy efficiency. Uh, all lighting on the site will be dark sky compliant. Uh, this was a update, uh, regarding the sustainability letter in the future. I noted the letter from, uh, April, then again, that was updated on August 3rd of 2022. I think at the last meeting, we just added that one word in there.
Yep.
Uh, again, this, uh, purple is the, uh, is the correct covenant, which has been double checked and triple checked. Um, this is again, the addition of the covenant. And the payments that shall be made, the payments are actually spelled out in the original covenant, so I just may note that. Say purple, uh, works shall be, uh, done prior to the issuance of the last certificate of occupancy for the project. And that is pertaining to GCT's purchase. Uh, number, this, uh, 10 PM, that is the one that can be, uh, commercial space. I think that was, uh. Spoken, that was, uh, vetted out at the last meeting. This is, um. A, the condition regarding the surety bond for the safety of the site. Uh, there's been a, a few just minor tweaks and wording to this, uh. Condition, uh, so I will just be silent for everyone to read. Any comments? Discussion points?
Um, you had said this already went through town council, is that right?
Correct, yes. Uh, no changes here. Um, this, uh, number 14, uh, blue. Uh, this was regarding the parking spaces in the parking study, uh, that was blue from the last meeting. This is regarding the dog park and the ownership. Um, affordable housing, 10% affordable housing shall be restricted in perpetuity. That was the language that was added. Marcelo, you did have a comment on this. Um, and that was changed. It said the payment shall, uh, should be made prior to, uh, prior to obtaining. Excuse me, occupancy for the second building. And that is in money to the upper charge trail, and then again, the $50,000 to the Federal Housing Trust. And I think the change was, uh, prior to obtaining. The certificate of occupancy. Uh, and we vetted, uh, we, we talked about that with the applicant that that payment would be made, uh, at the end of the project. At the last meeting.
Um, one, uh. One thing, Peter, which we had, you and I had talked about was that condition 15. Really should be the same as the one we corrected, um, letter, letter E. If you want to go back and grab it and just paste it. One is in the description of sustainability, which is kind of new in this, um. Decision and the other one is in the conditions itself.
Okay.
Great.
That's just showing track changes and so that's just our way for Emma and I to change every track everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, continuing on. Language in blue, the building Americas, that was at the last meeting. Uh, related business and pictures maintained by the applicant, that is, that's, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself. That's the dog park. Affordable housing. Uh, the payment shall be made, obviously. Edited. Now we are in the general project conditions. I don't believe there were any changes except this special permit number, which was corrected. Obviously, that differs with the site plan, however, that was just a minor, uh, scrimmages tweak. Going all the way through. All items. Uh, decision. And then obviously this will be filled in after the vote. And that is the conclusion of the document.
Are there any other questions from the board regarding the special permit approval document? The other document then is the site plan review document, which will be identical. To the special permit document, except for the findings. I'm. Trying to remember what, if any, changes we made to the findings. So the findings are based on the criteria.
Correct, and in this one, I'm sharing my screen now. Uh, in green, you can see that, uh, the changes were made, he identified the site plan review. Um, and obviously, uh, they're showing the changes that are under. Uh, the conditions that we changed, we will do tomorrow. Uh, we can, we can change it later. Uh, but that's why I've tracked you. All of this is the same.
So I think we would be down to page, yeah, page nine.
And you'd update that sustainability tomorrow?
Yes.
Alright.
So I assume you would just cut and paste everything from one document into the other documents that they're. Identical.
Yeah, that's why we, yeah.
Yeah, except for, um, so this is the criteria for the. Special permit.
Site plan.
Sorry, site plan review.
Yep.
I'm just noticing, uh, Peter on the, um. On the little header, when on the printed page. I don't know if you're right there, so it says special permit. So make sure you take a look at those and, uh, plug in the right one. I don't. I. I personally did not have any changes to these criteria. When we looked at it the last time. I don't know if anyone else has. Made changes since that time.
I personally am good with that. I didn't find anything.
All right. No, does anyone need more time on those criteria?
Oh.
Okay. Does anyone, the, the next step that we would do from here is to close the public hearing. Which has been open all of this time, but before doing that, I would ask, is there any questions from the planning board? That they would like to ask the applicant? After we close the public hearing, it is about our own discussion amongst ourselves. And then leading toward the motion to approve or disapprove the documents in front of us.
I mean, the, the only thing I was going to ask the applicant is obviously this has been a, a long-term partnership and discussion that has gone on for quite some time. Um, and once we. You know, close it out and start voting. We may not. At least, you know, we may not necessarily work together in the same way on the same kind of project, but we might in the future. So I always feel like we should almost have like an exit, exit interview to, to get some feedback from the applicant as to. What we as a board could have done differently. And also, so that we can have some takeaways moving forward. Um, and obviously to working together again in the future, because presumably we want to build the kinds of partnerships that. That motivate and inspire applicants to come back and, and develop in our, in our town in a way that. Is consistent with our community goals and works for the applicant, right? It's a partnership that hopefully is long-term. I can say that one of the things I really love about this project is, you know, as you know, I got quite excited about those, those solar panels. I think that's, that's really thrilling to me. That's one of my. Uh, very positive. Pieces of what I experienced in this project. Um, and I'd love to see other, other applicants coming to us with a, the project. So. That's sort of my, one of my positive takeaways. Um, and I, I did want to open that up to the applicant and maybe before we, we close this whole thing up. Give us an opportunity to hear some of that feedback, positive or negative. That we can learn from each other and, and continue to work together in the future.
Would you like us to respond to that? Would you rather wait?
Anna, is this something that we should talk about?
If you feel like you don't want that to paint our decision and vote, we can wait until after.
I'd be, I'd be happy to talk to you about it after the vote. I have some comments.
That's fine.
And I also think that frankly, we all started off on a tough foot when we had 150 people on the Zoom call. And, you know. And, you know, there's a lot of history to this project that we're not part of, and we had to suffer the slings and arrows of that, but. If you don't mind, I'd love to have a conversation after the vote if we.
We can certainly do that, yep.
Thank you.
Peter, was there? No, I mean, I think there was one, I, I think there was one thing I noted when, when. Anna actually mentioned solar panels, wasn't there one more note that we didn't go through here?
I, I, I double-checked it, I thought it was there, the concept that it would be built within two years.
Oh, yes.
That was important to me, and I think it's in there.
It is in there, it is in there, there was one more. There was one more comment, it's, it's number sixteen on page thirteen.
Yeah.
Of this, at least the special permit document.
Can you bring that back up, Peter?
Yep.
I opened up a can of worms.
Nope.
And, I think, in, in this last sentence. It says. Obviously, we said the two years is both mixed use buildings, we've built solar ready development. If the solar panels are installed during the construction, the application shall install the solar panels within two years of receiving the, receiving the final occupancy permit. Then I add in the sentence, within the review, this is, within the time period noted here within. The failure to install the roof mounted solar panels shall be a violation of this permit. And it's just a little note in there, one sentence. Because obviously, we are, we would be issued, you know, if the solar panels do not go on, and we give all the occupancies. To the building, we just have put that one note in there. To, to mark a violation of the solar panels do not go on in two years. I highly doubt that's gonna happen, and I have full confidence in the. Done, but it's kind of one.
That's fine with us, because we're gonna do it.
That's what I thought you were gonna say.
What we like to hear.
Alright, I'm gonna stop stats, stop sharing my screen.
Okay, so I, I think then. I assume that was, that, I just note, I just noted that when I was reading through and noted that that was missing, so. Or that we didn't talk about it, so it, it sounds like the McDowell's are, are willing to have kind of a, a closeout meeting with us in a way. To learn from each other. And, and we would do that on a different occasion. Is that, is that?
I guess I was suggesting that we do it for a few minutes tonight, after the vote or before.
Oh, okay.
I was suggesting that we do that now, because I don't want to close out the public commentary so that they can't speak, so.
We can, I don't mind doing it now, do you want to do it Roy now or after?
No, we, we can do it now, I, I will say this, you know, we, we've learned a lot through this process, working with your board, it's been over a year. We've never taken that long to do a project, so it's been kind of an interesting experience. I will say, at the end of the day, I, I don't normally say this, but I think you've made it a better project. I think Anna dragged us along kicking and screaming to do the solar and electric heat and, and electric everything, and I think. After educating ourselves a little more, because, you know, sometimes as a developer, when you get used to something and it works well. You know, why do you want to change? This works great. Well, guess what? Society is changing, and if we don't change with it, we're gonna be left behind. So I think in a lot of ways, you've kind of woken us to things that we need to look forward to the future, so for that, I want to thank you.
And this is probably one of the more complicated your project, projects you'll, you'll deal with, considering the twenty-plus year history. The issues with the, the A and R, the, the past promises, not promises, so a lot, the covenants, a lot of that, so. Yeah, there's a lot for us to get through as well, and we spent a full-time job doing it, so we appreciate. All of your time that you all had to spend on that and come up to speed as, as much as we did.
Thank you.
Alright, is there any other questions from the board or comments from the board at this time? If not, I will open it up extremely briefly, if there are any public comments from the small audience we have tonight. If anyone would like, no pressure. Alright. Seeing, seeing none. I will entertain a motion, I would like someone else to make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on. Have to say this right, hold on a second. One moment. One hundred Chestnut Street.
I second it.
Anna roll call vote?
Anna Tussmanitsky, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay, so now it's really us alone in a room. With some people spying on us. So. I guess this is a time where, if we want to take a minute for, to share our views on the project as a whole. I think. We've had a lot of discussions, but it's a time when we can do that before we go to vote on the project.
I mean, I, I will say it's a challenging project, I, I, I think that this was a difficult one for us due to the history involved. I continue to struggle in my mind as to whether we've met the, the intention of the covenant that the people of Ashland had with. You know, with the developer into whose shoes this particular applicant stepped into, I think we've done. We've done what we, what we can to honor the history and the intention of the people of Ashland. While reflecting on our current reality, it was a very difficult balance. I still struggle with, with some of the elements of where we're going or what we're voting on, but I think big picture, we, we did, we did well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree, I, I, I think, and what Roy said, I agree with. I think this group and their group, I think, I think we made the project better. I think this project could have been done in a, in a thousand different ways. But. But I'm, I'm, I'm happy, and I'm happy that, 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 that they were amenable to participate on the project, because it's, it's. Like Anna said, it's, it's, it's one of a kind, it's very complicated, but. But it was a good example of what we can do, and we're doing it in other projects, and, and we should try to keep doing it, to try to make the, the town better.
Anyone else? Um, I, so I appreciate the, there was a lot of work in the planning board before it became. On the planning board, and it absolutely made the project better, and I appreciate that the developer was working with us. I, I do not though feel we did meet the criteria, and I, this is not to be disrespectful of the board of that finding. Because I do appreciate the effort, but I, I just have a hard time when, you know, the residents that are there now. Literally didn't want to have the connection, when it's all over our zoning to save walkability, and. And unfortunately, I think, as Roy said, that's sort of an influence of the history of perhaps the area and the former developer, and. This is perhaps the best we can get, but I do still, you know, I had constituents contacting me about like really not. Changing anything for zoning for a project, and that would be. Again, those parking spaces, I know it's allowed to be changed, but if you take the forty-nine spaces that, I think I did my math correctly, it quickly, a hundred and eighty square feet. That's eight thousand square feet, that's a lot of open space, right? That would have been an option, so. I do appreciate efforts, and I think everyone made it better, and I, and I don't entirely agree with a couple of those findings. Deep R Kevin, do you want to weigh in, or? Not an obligation.
I'm all set, looks like the team said it all, so I'm good. All, all, all that I would say is, I think it was a true teamwork. No project is perfect from what I've gone through, I think what really made this project better is the fact that the team. The. Would McDowell team and the architect really worked hand in hand, and really listened to us and tried to make. Improvisation every time you came forward, and I think that really helped the process instead of having to. Kind of fight through those decisions, so I think that was a nice part of the project, and I'm a designer, and I really enjoyed. That part of it where we saw improvements every time somebody suggested something, you took it seriously and really looked into it, and I think. That was a great collaboration work, so thank you for all the hard work.
And I, I would say, one, one thing, just to make sure that is noted, that. It's, this, this project, it was part of a process that we're trying to improve with the design review committee. So I think we should also thank them for their input on the project, because they put a lot of work on it. And that was part of the team, that the, the Deepa says, made the project better.
Agreed, thank you Marcelo. Kevin?
Yeah, I think you guys said it all, but it's definitely an interesting one, this was the first kind of bigger project when I watched go all the way through. Process and. Boy, thanks to Peter and the rest of Town Hall staff too, that helped us kind of understand the whole history, I know there was a lot there to. Yep, pass the release of media and everything that. Helped explain this stuff, so. You know, what, what best findings and rules we kind of had to follow along to, to get this to where it stands now.
Thank you, and, and I think, I think for myself, I'm, can. A mirror deepest statements about no project is, is perfect, and I think that's partly because. We deal with so many different factors, there are the, the. The will of the neighbors that we want to take into consideration, there's the covenant. There's the need for affordability in Ashland, there's the desire for commercial space. And, and many others as well, and they don't all fit neatly into one nice design solution. And so unfortunately, it's, or fortunately, our job to, as Marcelo said, to try to make the best. The, the best project that we can and to. And, and it takes a lot of hard work to, to get there, is it gonna be perfect? No, certainly, probably not from anyone's point of view. But it's a lot closer to perfect, I think, than it, than it would have been, had we all not been working together, meaning the planning board, the applicants. The design review committee, as well as our town planning staff, and, and comments from, from the public as well. So I appreciate everyone's input in that. On that note, then, I will entertain a motion, and Peter, tell me if I get this wrong, I will entertain a motion. To approve, we have to do these once at a time, one at a time, and it has to be a motion to approve, is that right? You don't, you don't have to vote to approve, but it has to be a motion to approve.
Or the motion in the positive.
A motion in the positive, so I will entertain a motion to approve the special permit for one hundred Chestnut Street.
I'll make. Go ahead.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the one hundred Chestnut, Chestnut Street. Special permit project.
I'll second it.
Anna roll call vote?
Anna Tussmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, nay.
Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is a vote of four. One, zero, and that passes. I will now entertain a motion to approve the site plan review for one hundred Chestnut Street. Someone want to take a crack at that one?
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the special, the site plan review for one hundred Chestnut Street.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Anna Tussmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jersey, nay.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so that also passes with a vote of four. One, zero. I want to thank the applicant for their cooperation and professionalism during this process. It was a difficult one for all of us, and I very much want to thank the board for their time and attention to this very complex. Stressful, difficult project, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much, I'd like to thank the board as well, you, as volunteers, you've spent literally more than a year in this project. And I know you've spent it, making it a better project through the entire process, which frankly, you have, and we much appreciate. Your help in this process and getting us through it, thank you.
Peter, what is the, what are the wrap-up steps here? You obviously be.
So the wrap-up steps is the one I want to thank the board, and I want to thank, based on development for, for everything. It's been great to get to know Roy and his sons and the team, and obviously, it's been, one of the, it's been a learning experience for myself. With that said, the decision, the final edit to be made, obviously, with what was added tonight. The decision will be printed off in, in the office, I would say Monday, we can, they'll be ready for everyone to come in and sign. I can also bring those around for people to sign, if, if that works best, but that is pretty much it. We do have, and then we'll file the decision with the town clerk, and then the twenty-day appeal period starts. Butters will be notified of the decision being filed with the town clerk, as usual, and that is the next steps.
Alright, thank you Peter, just keep us informed via email so that. We, you know, come in when you need us to come in, when you're ready for us.
Very much.
Thank you everybody, we really appreciate it.
We, we might need a visit on the construction site, we'll have withdrawal from seeing you guys.
Anytime.
We can definitely do some tours.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody. Do we want a short break after that, before we tackle, oh, five oh one, which we have to get rid of Anna?
Yep, get rid of me, I'll, I'll, I look forward to the text, Peter, when it's time to come back.
You got it, I'll be texting you.
Alright, I'm gonna take a nice long break, what you guys do is your business. Alright.
Does anyone, would we like to, the rest of the board, would you like a break, or just kind of go as you need to go and come back when you need to come back, if you need a short break?
I can do it as we need.
Okay, sounds good. Alright, so it is my understanding that there is maybe a brief presentation, Peter, do you want to tell us where we're at?
Correct, so since our last meeting, we have. The planning offices started to work with the applicant on drafting up a decision, I know there was some elements and some loose ends that were. Asked for you to clarify to wrap up, one of whom was obtaining a legal memo from Lisa Need. Which was, was, which was, excuse me, that was done. And that was obviously sent out to the board in my update email on Wednesday, or yesterday. Lisa was in the office yesterday, so they would take care of that, I am also wrapping up a few items as received an email from. Four members, Keith, Keith Jersey, those are still in the works, however, from the planning board side, there was a couple documents that were requested. Number one, there was a response to the design review committee comments, I believe. And then also what was requested was a list of sustainable features for the project, the applicant did submit both of those documents. Friday, and those were circulated out to the planning board, additionally, I believe the applicant sent me a couple new. Pieces of information, which I had not had a chance to send out to the planning board, but I may suspect. That they may have been sent by the applicant to the planning board after their emails. But I think at this point, Matt and Ben Stevens, who are here on the call tonight, have a little presentation. He's going to review some of the loose ends, and then we can jump into taking a look at some of the findings. For the project as we continue to develop this decision, so at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Ben and Matt. And go from there.
Thank you Peter. Just to remind the board, our last meeting, we had sort of three, three smaller items, we completed a bunch of other tasks, but. We had a couple of questions about the parking spot out front. It was sort of the male drop-off, it was one spot, and I think there was some concerns that maybe it wasn't large enough. There was something brought up in the. It dovetailed into the Butters property, where we're, we're doing some slight grading on his property, and we had the. I'm not gonna say an issue, but we had a discussion about the two different sidewalks to the Butters property. The one in the front of the lot, being very difficult to be handicap accessible because of the grade change. And the last item was, we did have further conversations with the MWR TA, and we were pretty happy that they've agreed to, if we choose this route to include us as their southernmost stop. So they would do the Shaw stop, and then we'd do one more stop with us before they turn back and head towards the Framingham train station. So I think that's a great amenity, and I'm glad we did the research for it and, and talked to them, because that's a great amenity for our residents. Have a bus every half hour essentially, twenty minutes away from the Framingham train station. So Matt, if you don't, if Matt's screen could be shared, we're just going to show you on the plan. Because we, we shared the plan with the MWR TA and we talked a little bit to them. Trying to get that plan up if we could.
It's disabled right now. I'm just trying to.
Peter, you out there, Peter?
I'm sorry, I just had to jump off screen.
No problem. Did you see your math screen?
Yeah, I just took care of it. I'm sorry.
Next page, Matt. Let's go to the, let's go to the full plan, Matt. It's probably easiest to start there. So this is the handicap, the, the handicap and the work on the Abutter's property. So if you recall, and originally we had a sidewalk, if you will, a walkway at the front of our location, and we had a walkway at the back of our location to the Putson Moore location. After speaking to Jim Ara Butter and looking at the, how his parking and his handicap is laid out, all visitors to his facility have to enter through the back, the called the west entrance, if you will. So even if they park in the parking lot, they're going to essentially go right to where that back sidewalk dumps off to, to enter and pay to come into the, to come into his location. So in retrospect, the front sidewalk near our main entrance doesn't make a lot of sense because you're actually putting people right in the middle of his parking lot, which has no sidewalks. And if someone's visiting Putson Moore, they're going to go in and park at Putson Moore. This is more for either someone visiting Putson Moore, but walking out to the Wunorf through our site, which they would come out through the gate up on that west location anyhow, and there'd be signage there to that sidewalk. So we eliminated, it just didn't seem to make a lot of sense. So we eliminated the front sidewalk. We, that solves the handicap accessible issue because we only have one route between the two properties and it is handicap accessible. We talked a little bit to Jim Ara Butter about completing that sidewalk onto his property. We'd have to make some handicap ramps and, not ramps, but transition spots, if you will, where the sidewalk would hit his parking area. And we also discussed some of the side, the work I would need near the front entrance of the property for cars to enter smoothly onto his site from the main entrance because of the grade change, as we're kind of lifting our site up a little bit. He was amenable to both. We went over in the field. He shuts his operation down the end of October. So I told him that in the month of November, December, or March of the following, you know, whatever season we're in, we have no problem grading out his, his parking lot, which is not a lot, but it's about six inches over about twenty feet and redoing the paving. And he's very excited about this, this proposed use. He's very excited about the increased demand and we're, we're excited to have him as another amenity for, for our residents. So that, and that appears to be resolved. I sent you copies of, I met Jim onsite, went over it with a plan, but I, then I had him confirm some email communications so that the board was aware that he is okay with what we're talking about doing. Hopefully that will suffice as evidence of such. Now, Matt, if you could go back to the parking area, or is it there just covered? Okay. This was the spot, if you recall, this is the north entrance to the resident, to sort of our main residential entrance. And we did have this, the, this area was two spots in the Wunorf before, one of which was for mail and drop off. But I, I think there was some concern from the board that it wasn't large enough to sort of pull in and pull out. And it just so happened that with the discussions with MWR TA, that this was the natural spot for them as well. There's, there's covered. We'll put a bench underneath our main entrance. You know, I think they feel like they may stop right at the crosswalk and load the bus, if you will, because they can come in our north entrance, go out our south entrance and sort of turn, you know, the bus can change direction through the Wunorf, if you will. Going, coming off One Pond Street onto our site, driving through the Wunorf and leaving our site through the main entrance. So that spot now is forty-four, about forty feet wide, nine feet deep, if you will. Sort of a multi-function spot. It will be the mail, it'll be delivery, it'll have signage for the MWR TA. It'll sort of be a spot that's always in transition and always in use by someone who was in parking. So we think, we think it's working out the way it should. And that is essentially sort of the three open items that we had from the last meeting. And we have started working with Peter on assembling all the documents and getting some final plans and getting some final letters from some folks. So we feel like we're sort of getting, you know, getting near the goal, if you will.
Great. Yeah, I appreciate that little summary, and I especially like how the, how the bus situation worked out, you know, Kate bringing that issue in, but using using paving and things that we already have instead of creating more and getting more, more uses out of one space, I think is, it's a good thing. So I think from here, there, there is a lot of documentation that has been kind of thrown at the planning board fairly recently, different responses that you guys have been providing. So we're going to need some time to, to digest that. So I think we, we're maybe start going to look at conditions tonight, not conditions, findings in order for us to understand what, what are their questions may be coming out of this process, and those are the criteria that we need to answer as, as part of this process. So, so we can start to address those. But before we, before I do that, I want to see if there's in, in terms of this project, at this time, it's not your only opportunity, but at this time, what are people's outstanding, larger questions that they don't feel that maybe we have covered in full yet? And I think there are some outstanding things that we haven't had time to review. But if anyone has something specific, let's make sure we have it on the table as early as possible.
So this, I have something going back, I think, and it's just probably because we've had so much on our plate, maybe. But I did bring it up in September, the traffic report, I think it's sent to, like, was reviewed by a representative for Ashlyn, let's say, third party. It, it actually said there's no like future site developments in the traffic, which really isn't true. There's that Shaw's Plaza, and I imagine maybe at that very moment that was issued, nobody knew, but there's been conversations for a while about the Shaw, so we should ask for that report to be updated. And it also had a recommendation that we checked with Holliston if there were any being at the border, if there's something there, and I don't know if that part was done as well.
Peter, don't you have mentioned something about that to me?
So I do. So I have reached out to Holliston Town Planner, and him and I have been corresponders. And so I have done that, and she has not issued any issues. And there hasn't been to light any issues regarding this development. She just mentions the Putson Moore, and obviously I think Mr. Stevens and his son have have been in contact with Putson Moore. I know as, as Putson Moore, you know, it has eased me to enter their property which I believe obviously, as stated, that, that that communication is done. I have kind of talked to the traffic consultant, and I haven't had time to really kind of go full circle on this one. But obviously, the time of the application, the review of the application, typically they wouldn't have taken into consideration the Shaw's Plaza, you know, until the time that they filed to endure the project was a little bit more underway. And so I know it's a little bit of a timeline item here, but I, I have been looking into both issues.
So Holliston doesn't believe there's any projects coming up that would add to the traffic.
Not in the town of Holliston, no.
So then we just stopped it after the Shaw's updated traffic report.
And I can, I've talked to the traffic consultant about that, and I'll be sending out additionally.
I think that raises a larger, oh, sorry, Peter, real.
No, please. I think it's a good discussion point, and I think Tricia, I think, you know, I think you and I kind of discussed a little bit, but and, and I, I, I think this is a, a good discussion to have.
I, I, I think the, the question for me is, how do we how do we address the issue of, I mean, yes, the Shaw's Plaza had, has applied. But many changes, especially with this Pond Street renovation going on, one of the reasons it, it one of the reasons it happened to begin with was to encourage a greater development of businesses and mixed use along it, right? That was the whole Pond Street overlay district. That was the whole presentation to get the state funding to redo the road. So how do we how do we take that into consideration? I mean, the traffic report, you know, has to take, I don't know if the traffic report takes into consideration where we are right now. Projects that pop up onto the planning, you know, the planning board docket in the process. Or does it take a long range look at about what might happen at any site along this street as it starts to change toward what it was intended to be, you know, with the what, what we were looking at that this, that Pond Street starts to come of age, I guess. So how do we, you know, how does that get evaluated? Is there a, is there a typical way that that's approached? I mean, this is a very transitional, obviously very transitional street right now.
It just, in, in my eyes, I've, I've asked the traffic consultant on how to proceed. You know, and he kind of, you say, he take, you know, you take one project at a time and you do the best you can. You know, and, and we kind of, that's the way, that's what happens, you know, and and obviously we, we've done, we're trying to do that, you know, Holliston, I've spoken to them. This project was proposed in consideration of the roadway, the new roadway. And then kind of moving in there, moving forward. Typically, you always look at what is being proposed and could be proposed within the area or upper project, but you know, the Shaw's project is it hasn't been applied, yes. However, I think that's, that's a long way from you know, we'll open that public hearing next week, so I don't want to say too much, but I think you know, that, that, that's been, that project's going to need a lot of review.
So there's no study, and this is a question, there's, there's no traffic study that had been done related to Pond Street 126 before the, before we applied for the, the funding from the state about what this area might look like at, at full buildout, you know, say, or to assess what the, what Pond Street might look like in ten years or twenty years. Is that a, a part of that kind of process funding? Obviously, that's before your time. It was, you know, before my time on the planning board. That process had already begun, right? So I don't know if there's that kind of information available. It seems like it would be more big picture than to look at one specific project that may or may not happen.
You know, I can look forward to see if it exists. I know, and I can talk to other folks in Town Hall and other, you know, people that really kind of spearheaded the it, it definitely shouldn't have happened. I think the first place I'll look is the, is the, is the Pond Street planning process and that documentation that was done by Steve Cecilio, the Cecilio Group, to look at what the road capacity was, and if there was an actual but it, it poses a good question, and I think it's a, it's a good process question. However, I think and, and that's where I can, that's what, you know, is the right answer and nothing is the wrong answer.
Yeah, and I want to note that it's not necessarily a question directed at this project, but along about our future as we evaluate projects that come up along Pond Street, right, in, in their entirety, so.
Well, I, I think there is, that is a valid point in the big picture, and I checked with Massey O P. But I, I would say that there is a, a comment on the traffic report saying there's no proposed developments, and that, that looks a little bit like something we should close the loop on, and that I would not feel good about saying, you know, we, we just, we know this is in front of us and we're accepting a report saying there's nothing. The very consultant said, please check with Holliston, right? Not thinking, please check with Ashlyn next door. So, so I think it is false, but I, I, I think to take the big picture and ignore that is not really helpful when there's documentation that says otherwise.
Yeah, I think that's fair. It, you know, what would it be, what would it be if the, if the project had opened today? You know, if, if Shaw's had already submitted and then this one submitted, you know, would it, would the would it think, would the traffic report think differently? How about something? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I've checked with Holliston and, and I'm happy to send, you know, PDF my email correspondence and send that to the board and I do that. And then, and I'll, I'll follow up with our traffic engineer, because obviously it's our traffic engineer, Ron Muller, who wrote the comment. And, and obviously, I think Kate, you know, specifically to address your concern is, you know, I think that you and the other board members should hear from Ron. And, and, and so I did have, I have approached a subject with Ron and, and then I want, and, and I've asked him for his honest opinion and, and realization of, of the project and the projects in Pontry as a whole. So obviously, he's willing to do that. So that's just the item that I'm still working to tie down.
I had, um, when, and some of the other things I think will probably come with conditions, but I mean, this might seem silly, but it was like a nice picture of a fire truck that's our current size, and I know we're getting a new one. And I, I don't know if it's the same size. And related to that is, I mean, we see Ashlyn growing, right? So like, is the next fire truck going to be even bigger? I don't know. And not that we're predicting that, but what we probably should know is is that, is the new truck the same size? Yes or no? And then is that sort of an average sized truck and we're okay? Yes.
I can answer that too. And so I've spoken with Lynn Morhan of the Ashland Fire Department. And I've also requested the, the turning radius details from that. Then I'm going to have the fire department look at that one more, you know, analyze the turning radiuses again, and then we looked at it before. Whoever, number one, the, the, the truck that would be ordered, the, the future ladder truck at the town of Ashland would not be any bigger and would have a, 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 the exact same indoor tighter turning radius than the ones we actually have right now. So, speaking with the fire department, the, the, the turning radius is, the, the turning radius, excuse me, or radii that is used within our turning analysis would fit any plan, future fire apparatus that the town of Ashland would look to purchase in the future. Just since we're on the call, I want to make note, the town of Ashland at this point has not ordered a new ladder truck. And, and, and that, that is a very large process and a very big purchase. A ladder truck costs about 1.25 million dollars. So I don't want to alarm any, you know, set any bells off, but I did check into the turn that radius with the, with the fire department. I don't have a full answer yet, you know, and, and they, I want them to review it, but that's the information that I have collected.
Kate, do you have more on your list? Moment?
Nope. Thank you.
Anyone else, like, big outstanding, doesn't have to be big actually, but outstanding questions that you think are lingering in your own mind that haven't been fully answered?
Had a couple. Yeah, I think there was a, still some GCG comments that was just going to get a final closeout from them. And I don't know if it went around already and missed it, but just something I think we should see.
I have the one dated September 21st. Is that the latest? Or is, is GCG going through it once more, Peter? Latest or is is G C G going through it once more, Peter? Is is that what you're looking at too, Kevin? Do you know the?
That that sounds right. I don't have it up.
Okay.
Now, but there was still, you know, it was still four or five pages with things to just.
Yeah.
Close out.
Yep.
If we could, Peter, I, if you call, I'd sent it um. Probably three weeks ago to G C G, but I got a email that Mike was away for a week. So we have yet to get the final closeout from um G C G for that last, sort of the last full round, if you will.
I talked to Mike, he was actually in Passau when I was working with him and some other stuff. Uh, and he did mention they're working through the process, and so. It's on their, it's on their, it's on their radar and uh, and and I did make note of that. Yeah, the the latest plan is dated, excuse me, Kevin, I'm sorry, uh, October twelfth. And that is the latest plan that they're working off, which I believe is sent over by the.
Yeah, I was, I was looking at the uh, so they're looking, they're working off the October twelfth plan. And I I was looking at the, actually, the letter that was dated. September twenty-first, which I think is, was the most up to date report about the C G C G comment. I didn't know if I had. Okay.
I'm sorry, Kevin. Go ahead.
The other thing that I'm still. I guess confused about is the whole easement thing on Congress Way, and. I saw the letter came out with Lisa Mead's opinion, and it it just confuses me more that. You know, she says it needs to be available to be used as a road, but I'm not sure it even is now, but there's trees planted across it, I think, connecting to the. The other neighborhood um. Oh, if the way I read it, is it, it needs to be passable, not. By parking spaces and it kind of isn't in the back left corner.
Um. I I think, if I could jump in, would that be okay?
Yes, please.
Uh, I think what, the easement is not to the back, not to Meeting House Path from the back, the easement is to Putson Moore. So um. There's no easement through to Meeting House Path, so that's why that's being closed off. We have to maintain the the entrance and exit rights through our property of an easement. Not a fee, not fee proper, if you will, of access to the Putson Moore site, which we do achieve with our layout. If that's what, is if that's what you're asking.
Okay, yeah, I thought it somehow related to the whole Congress Way thing as well, which shown on the plan is going all the way through the site.
Now, Congress Way was never, we're actually uh filing a plan shortly with this board that is a. It compiles the land and removes Congress Way. Now, it does not remove the easement, the easement is the easement, it's separate issue altogether, but we're. Filing essentially an A and R plan, which will make this one big lot with an easement through it, as opposed to. Three different lots with right, with roundings and easements and and Congress Way, et cetera, because they're all under one ownership and they're not. They were never completed or accepted, so.
Is that an N A R that's going to, or an A and R that's going to? Be submitted to planning board soon? Is that?
Just for, yes, because then when we transfer title, we'll have a, we'll have an appropriate single lot plan and so on and so forth, as opposed to multiple pieces, so. It's not condition of the special permit, one way or the other, but it'll probably end up being simultaneous.
Okay.
All I would say is, once that's, once that's submitted, it'll be reviewed and obviously. I I personally think from my experience, Ben, if you can file that. Well, this decision process is going forward, then you can review that, and then we can kind of.
Right.
Take both on at the same time to make sure that they correspond with each other.
Kevin, anything else on your list?
Um, on the, on the plan we just saw with the the bus stop, um, I saw that uh. It's great that you guys reached out to them and that they want to put a stop there. But their letter kind of said that they'd like the space to be. Dedicated and posted as no idling, yada yada, and and we're suggesting that it's gonna be a. A drop off spot slash bus spot slash. Whatever, so, I mean, how do you envision that signed and policed?
Um, I don't really see it being a issue per se, will not be a parking spot um. Yeah, if there's mail and there's drop off, I just don't think the timing, I mean, might there be a conflict once or twice? Sure, but I also don't feel, this is a flag down. Bus stop, so essentially, the bus drives through and if there's nobody there, it just keeps going. Um, so I'm presuming that in the morning, there might be some folks getting on this bus, and. In the evening, there might be some people getting off this bus, but for most of your day in and day out operation, there's nobody parking there, there, other than. You know, somebody, an Amazon package or something like that, so. We'll have to sign it correctly and manage it correctly, but I I think we might be overthinking. A conflict at such a small activity such as this right there.
I I think it's really more just a signage conflict. I think we need to clear that this is where the the deliveries and drop offs go, but, you know, the. M W R specifically asks not to sign it that way, so. There's, you know, if you guys could put your suggested signage on the plan or something for.
Yeah, we can do that. We told them, we told them what this site, what this, what it would be, and they'd be fine. They're like, just, we want our sign there. So, you know, there's nobody parking there yelling at us that we can't pull in, um, so.
So that they, they already know and understand that it's not. An exclusive use.
Correct.
Shared use, and and they're okay with that. Okay.
And I guess there would also need to be some communication with them. Anytime that space is gonna be used for a public event and blocked to traffic entirely.
Yes.
Um, the the only other kind of. Big thing, I guess, or um. Item not to forget in the. In the decision is the uh, all the screening trees, and I know that designer view kind of harks on. Mix of species and that kind of thing, and it's a really tight perimeter that we're trying to. Things to live in, and there's those big tall trees in the back that. Are, it'd be hard to replace if they don't live through the construction and. Snow storage underneath them, et cetera, that doesn't happen now, so I think we just need to. Make sure that's worded strongly and in um. Decision when it gets written.
So the the protection of the, the um, the trees at the back of the site, which were already tall, right?
Right.
Those specifically the ones here?
Yeah, those, and I know Designer View's last comment had asked again for, you know, not. One line of arborvitae's between there and the uh retirement place or whatever is next door. You know, a mix of species. Um, but just, if if it is all one or whatever it is, it should. Be worded well that they need to be replaced as they, as they die, if they do. Um, I mean, it looks like they're being planted kind of in the middle of a retaining wall, so not a lot of root space and. Cars backed up to them, so it's a place to grow, I think, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that. Um, I I haven't reviewed those plantings and nor am I a. Landscape architect that can identify all the plantings, um, but uh. I I would hope even that there's, there's flexibility, you know, maybe I'm, I'm, we'll have to look at, you know, how it's written. But for something other than a row of arborvitae's, um, which I think gets a bit old. And aren't necessarily the most beautiful things to look at, I don't think. So that maybe there are other options that aren't so barrier-like, um, but actually provides something nicer to look at. Um, but that's just my, well, to see how it's in there now and what has been agreed to. Um, what has been agreed to already, or what what solutions that the the design review committee maybe has. Found, you know, with with those types of vegetation. So. Like I said, I haven't, I haven't reviewed that. I think, I think we're also looking at that the. The larger design review document of their official meeting minutes, that that has been passed. To TRAS, right, Peter, to to make sure our bases are covered there, that everything has been resolved. Yeah, in the same way that G C G, yeah, or responded to, okay. Right, anyone else kind of issues that are, they feel are really outstanding? All right. So uh, why don't we bring up some of the criteria that, obviously, there's same. Special permit, the site plan review criteria. Peter, are you able to bring those up that we can actually start looking at these? And um, how they, what our discussion is about, about the same criteria, but for this project?
Correct. So what do you, what everyone is, excuse me, what everyone is looking at right now is a draft. Uh, a a very preliminary draft or of how we start to put this together, so. Right here are the facts and the findings. Uh, this is kind of the the site as a whole outlining uh what is being proposed and some of the history behind the site. Please note, it's a little bit less complicated than the Hundy chest first. Uh, so with that said, if you come all the way down here, you kind of get into the special permit criteria. These are the criterias that are within the bylaw. Number one, community needs served by the proposal. Uh, these are um. This uh, you know, things that, you know, we've kind of, that bring offices and shout that. Put in there uh, just as as you start to think about these uh developments. I won't read everyone, everything around, but if anybody has any comments on A, B, C, D. Uh, you can obviously, uh, I'm gonna take track of changes. Uh, and if anybody wants to add anything, just add a bullet point. Um, so I can therefore expand on the ideas, uh, or one's ideas. Uh, at at a different time, and then I'll be able to serve you this as likely to the Hundy chest decision.
So and and please, anyone, just kind of jump in as as we, as. The, as as you need to with these things. I I was just looking at point B, the um, parking and loading. I think some of the things we've talked about there are um, again, that the, just today, that the um. That uh double long um drop off area has been provided for packaging, for. Uh, mail, for just a spot for all those quick kind of trips to happen. Um. And I think there needs to be some note in there about um. That um. Loading in terms of people moving in and out of apartments will be handled by the management and reserving. Enough space for that to happen safely and efficient, efficiently, um, without disturbing the commercial spaces.
And I think, I I I think we said that managerially also the time of the moving would be, would have to be scheduled. It's not that you show up with your truck, right?
Yeah, and some of these will obviously find, these thoughts will find their ways into the conditions as well, like especially that point. Um, Marcelo, that that would be outlined as a, as a condition.
Yeah. Uh, also the. Plus thought.
I think it, I think in the, in the community needs, it's worth mentioning the the Warner as a. As at least a part-time public space is a place to gather. Um, that that's what it was. You know, intentionally designed for that, a place of activity at the very end of. You know, Ashen's part of Pond Street at least.
Wouldn't that feed on the? On, I think it's D?
Oh, someplace further down?
Little down below uh.
Might be, it might. Yeah, it could, yeah, it might be a good place for it.
Ne- ne- neighborhood character and social structures, I mean, that that's exactly what it is, right?
Yeah, place for gathering and bringing together in an urban area.
Yeah, public part, po- public, private.
Mm-hmm.
Open space.
Impacts on the natural environment, there's just.
Can we go back to uh C, because there's still that um sewer connection, it says it's adequate, but I. Last I knew it wasn't adequate about there was some connection. Had to be upgraded.
Yeah, so there's one thing about the sewer capacity being. Um, being okay, but the sewer connection, which will become, I assume, part of the conditions, but could be mentioned here as well.
Yeah, what what was in the study that the 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 Michael uh added to his letter? Didn't they confirm that the capacity for this project and the others are taken into consideration?
Yes, that they were already taken into consideration and that there's capacity, but I think Kate's referring to, there's actually a physical part that needs to be.
Yeah.
Replaced.
Yes.
Um.
Yeah.
So capacity versus physical equipment, I guess.
Yeah, just to repeat, uh, the 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 current order of the site that Fafford, Howard Fafford, uh, long time ago. Um, made a deal, promise. Handshake uh with the town and. He was gonna connect uh what is known as the Old Colony Pump Station or the Ledgmere Pump Station, excuse me. Um, via gravity flow to the Brogdon, excuse me, to the racket load station, which is uh. Which therefore pumps sewer to the framing. Uh, there's about a twenty-foot section of sewer line that has not been completed. Uh, and as this project, it's always been known that um. That 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 the developer of 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 this parcel, which is. Um, going to be purchasing the land from the Fafford Company would be inserting into a, uh, putting the missing link. In the pipe, so um, so the DPW has um redundancy regarding flow. Um, and connection points to our pump stations.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And I think next on our list of getting us, the guest speaker in is is going to be um.
Yes.
Greg O'Leary. Yeah, Greg O'Leary, to to talk about more about the, about the sewer system. So.
It's on my list.
Okay. Um. The impacts on the natural environment, I mean, um. I think, you know, obviously, this is a derelict site, it's been used as a. Storage area, I think, for other projects for decades, um. And um. So I I think what is going back. The plantings that are going back on there um is more. Than what it has now, that doesn't mean it's a. Doesn't mean it's a natural area or a forest or anything like that, but as a, as something that's adding back um. Adding something more beautiful back into this kind of site, I think um. It is a plus. And that we're doing.
Also, we're 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 increasing the number of 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 trees in the site, I assume, or can can we say that, or is that not true?
Oh, no, I think it's, well, all of the applicants speak, but I I think it must be true, right? There's not much there.
Yeah.
Yeah, quite a few, quite a few more.
This is your typical question we're doing uh, obviously, tax base. Um, and and we'll have something after this.
Okay, can't wait till we can put specifics there. You know, it's not gonna be this project, but we can, we can put the actual calculations that we use for these things eventually, hopefully sooner or later.
Yeah, no, and, and Kate, you know, obviously we put together a, you know, we're working on developing a tool and reformatting it from what we had with the service development and the town had hired economic development consultant. You know, where, where, once we get something, we can put that in and, and I'll try to add some more, you know, data to that, which I think is something that everybody would like to see.
Yeah, I don't think we're quite ready, but it will be very nice to be able to put that there and we won't really have to think about it too much, right? We'll run our tool that we're happy with. We put it there, it'd be consistent, it'd be awesome.
Moving down a little ways, this is the criteria for the Pond Street overlay district. This is the permitting avenue, which is, which the project actually comes under. I haven't gone this far yet within it, but if there's any elements regarding one, two, three, four, one through eight, please, you know, send, send me any information or just forward it out. I'd be happy to, you know, make sure.
I think there's something to be noted and I'm, it might be a little point outside of these because I'm not sure where it fits in and it may fit in several. That this is a, a street in transition. And so you know, when we look at the visual character of the neighborhood, it's there's, when you look along Pond Street, there's not a lot to respond to, you know, in terms of what the businesses look like in terms of the, you know, what the, a pattern that we should be emulating. And so you know, I think in this case, to me, we were really looking at the immediate site, right? What, what's next door? And the, the landscape, you know, that across, you know, across the street is a, a steep hill where nothing will be built, obviously. So connecting into various residential neighborhoods there. So it's, it's tricky, some of these, because that visual character of the neighborhood just doesn't, along Pond Street, doesn't. There's, there's not a lot to grasp on to, to say, yep, this is the language or not, not a language necessarily that you want to repeat. So I think it's important to understand that that we're kind of entering into new territory here.
I would say we could kind of be a little real here too, that these don't all need to be written with rose colored glasses, so to speak. There's trade-offs being made here for affordable housing. I mean, when you read the first few of these, adequacy of the site in relation to the size, it's much bigger structure than I love says should be there. Open space, it barely meets the minimum with the palace, it should be there, but you know, there's, there's lists of pros and cons of.
Yeah.
It's all for the affordability, really.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Kevin, that that findings aren't necessarily, findings take into account all of the the, the pluses and minuses and the trade-offs that, that we're making, you know, so. I think in terms of some of these, the I've driven by this site a lot recently and thought about it as I head toward the Rotary. I, I think the, the more I look at the, the site, there's, there's definitely a you know, I thought about before the Valley Farm was built that there was an idea of having some kind of an end piece, you know, to Pond Street and I can, I would totally support that. But given the site that we're dealing with, with the memory care facility next door, condos in the back that are hidden with the Arbivites, the hill and bluff across the street, which also has residential around it on top of it. That to me, it really does seem, and, and people can disagree, I don't want to write this condition, this is something to consider, that it seems to me that it is an appropriate place for, for residential versus what it might have been had not the care facility been built. You know, if that site was empty, I would maybe look at this site differently, but it's not. So yeah, so that's why to me it seems to be a, a, a fit for residential. And that might not be something that I say in things that are further in along Pond Street. It doesn't mean all sites are suitable for residential.
I think I have a lot right now to go on. So if anybody, I can, you know, we'll, we'll work on this, not the
Okay.
The points, but I think, you know, we can definitely take a, take a good you know, crack at this and then we can send it out to the planning board members and obviously anybody could add anything they want and then we can kind of circulate it from that.
Yeah, and I do think it's important for everyone to, I mean, these aren't the conditions, but I feel like this is where we kind of think about how did we get to where we are, you know, and how do we feel about the project, you know, and what we've developed on the project? As we have thought about these things the entire time. It's not like we haven't thought about Pond Street during this whole process. We're only thinking about now. We've been thinking about it the whole time. Right? So, so how do we put our process and our thought process into these criteria? So that there's a better understanding of how we got to where we are. I think that's in, in both pluses and minuses. As, as, as kind of Kevin said, we don't have to sugarcoat it, right? And I think that's important to do versus very generic responses to these things. And we may not agree. I'm not sure that I'm not even, I think the criteria might reflect, could reflect varying viewpoints as well, you know, so. I think as, as Peter puts this into the, into draft form, please make sure people read them and respond honestly to them, right? So. All right. Well, I'm of the mind as it is going, getting closer to 10:15 and we are waiting for some other components. It seems like a lot of the things are being wrapped up. And a lot of that material we have, we've also been getting recently too. But there's going to be a lot of processes like this that we just need to go through all the detail, but the detail mostly is, is there. The one thing I would wonder about in, in terms of design, this might be when Matt maybe comes back. I think he was going to look at something with the roofs and this had to do with design, a design review comment, a roofs on the front that still weren't quite. He was going to try something with the, the bays in front and the roof lines on those. Unless I'm misremembering, it didn't seem like that was fully resolved. It might be, it might be now, he might have already worked on it, but I don't remember reviewing it. So.
I think we did. There was, there was one final meeting with Matt and that's pretty much all we did was, we sort of had a floating roof at the top and he had to sort of tie it back. It was a while ago, though.
Yeah, I remember talking about, but I don't remember seeing the result. You know, that's, and like I said, maybe my memory is just faulty, but so it's just something I want to like make sure we follow up on, so to, to, to look at those elevations again and talk about it if, if we haven't already. I just don't think we have. So I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at the tape, I guess, to see what the last comment was. So. All right, everyone's getting tired. Any other comments on this tonight? I mean, does direction about is, is, is everyone sitting where I'm sitting that, you know, we have design review comments to review. We're waiting for the final GCG report. We have some answers to the questions that Kate and Kevin threw out so that we're we're kind of sifting through all of the information and, and you guys have provided a lot with the sustainability list and all the things that we're asking for. So it's all coming in. It's just a matter of us making sure we review it thoroughly to get to so that we can start writing or can, Peter can continue to write the, the draft. So, does that all sound? Sounds fair, members of the planning board?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right. In that case, where, where are we going with this one, Peter?
I think we should continue. It's a November 10th. That's our next meeting. Just in, in the essence that we are continuing to work on it.
Okay, yep.
Questions, we can, we can vet them out, but I do not want to go any further than that.
Okay.
I think that's being respectful of the applicant's time and in the board's time as we try to move everything forward. Is that acceptable to the applicant?
But.
Make a motion that we continue the 501 Pond Street hearing till November 10th. There a second?
I'll second it.
Right, and a roll call vote?
If I'm good, I.
I'm sure that one I.
Catherine Jersey guy.
Kevin McClain I.
And Trish Akenda I. So we are continuing that until November 10th. It's going to be a busy night. They all are. All right. So thank you for joining us. And I would just ask the planning board, as we start to get all these documents coming in, that we try to keep up with them as much as possible, so our meetings are as productive as, as they can be. There's going to be a lot of information coming in. We, I know no one wants to, to miss anything. So so yeah, find the time somewhere. It's not easy. All right. Do you want to give Anna a, a text there, Peter?
Yep, I have a text.
Okay. You know, while, while we're waiting for her, we just need to do the continuance of 399 Union Street Site Plan Review. That's the Starbucks, Peter, this is in design review. They've asked to go to the design review committee. Is that right?
The design review committee and they are working through their site and they're working through some traffic components and they're trying to come back with the the best site and not waste time with the planning board. So they are, I've been working with them and they are going to a study, a thorough traffic study and, and I think they'll, they'll be back in front of the board with, with a, with a better design and a design that everybody, including our traffic consultant can stand on.
I, I, I forget Tricia and Peter. What, is this coupled to the design review? Did we establish the, the, the items to review like we have done in the past?
No, this surprised me too, Marcelo, but apparently, because usually we've hardly started to talk about this project, right? We saw it one time.
Yeah, exactly.
But apparently the design, apparently the applicant asked to go to design review. And so
Just, it just strikes me as strange. We're trying to, to establish a process and I thought we had agreed on what the process was. And it was not that.
Yeah, I, I agree. We kind of, in, in a way, we didn't formalize it, I guess. So in this.
And I, I had nothing against it. I just say that, that this makes the process unnecessarily convoluted because we were trying to clarify. And and this is going to come with, we're going to have to start, you know, it's going to go on a little bit in circles.
It very well, I would fully expect that it may go back to design review committee after the planning board looks at it.
I know, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yes.
Which project are we talking about?
Starbucks.
Gotcha.
So they, they are in, have gone in front of design. They asked to go in front of designer view, so they have a design review committee. And I guess the process that we have talked about it, we haven't kind of set it in stone with the design review committees, like what our process is, or if there are option A, option B, you know? So I was surprised as well that this one kind of went to design review. But that doesn't mean that all decisions aren't completely open to the planning board.
Does the applicant give intention for the, like, what was the reason why?
Yeah, Peter, do you know?
I think they want to, they want to start the process. They knew, you know, I think that the development is, is being the attorney, Jerry Efron, who knows the process well, in Ashland, wanted to get the process going with the design review committee. And if we wanted to collect their thoughts and make any changes, you know, and collect their thoughts, you know, as they're, you know, working with the planning board in terms of requesting design review, you know, I, I, I kind of let that happen and made a five design review. As, as I don't want to help, you know, I don't want to hold back anybody that doesn't want get more, you know, spearhead the process.
I mean, my thought would be, as long as there's an understanding that it sounds like if it's a data gathering process, the applicant one, one, came to us, got some ideas, now wants to go to design review, get some more ideas and then restart all over again. I don't have any problem with that, as long as the applicant understands that it's so early in the process that there's going to be a repeat.
What, what I say, Anna, is like, yeah, you, you, you're right. It's just, but, but that's not the process we're trying to establish. So it's just, it, it seems to me like a futile exercise to go there before, before having a first overall view from the planning board, because of the design review is intended to, to, to help expand that view of the planning board, not starting the process with them. It just, it's counterintuitive.
Yeah, it seems a little funky. I mean, they came once, once.
I think the bylaws are actually unclear about what that process is and what comes first and what comes second. So I think it's both that we have to look at that and see what we, what our authority is to completely can, to, to have a better control over what happens first and second. And also I think a discussion about our preference, that there may be projects that we say, yep, go ahead, go to design review committee, we may send you back there. But I, I, I think it should be, hopefully, ideally, a process where the planning board sends it to design review committee. Not that the applicant decides on its own to go to design review committee.
Exactly, but that, that's, that's, I think in two or more than two meetings, we spoke with members of the design review and we agreed that that was going to be the process. I thought that, that's what I remember.
Yeah, so.
What I'm curious is, I guess is beyond us, but do we even know that, do we have the power to say a project can happen or not? Like for example, right now Starbucks is closing or there are no Starbucks that's really functional in kind of wherever you turn around, everything is closed down. So for a project to be viable or not, I mean, do we make that call at all before it goes to the design stage of it, or is that not in our jurisdiction at all? Like because the first call that we had, like, there were a lot of feedback on whether Ashland wants Starbucks or not, right? Who makes that call? I'm just curious.
I mean, we do. We're the planning board. It comes to us. We're being asked to approve an application to develop.
Yeah, so having gone to design review board just seems like. Yeah, so having gone to design review board just seems like we are not ready for that stage at all in any way.
So this is for a site plan review process, you know, and so typically, we do send it to the, to the design review committee, and as you started that process, our bylaws are unclear. And I think we need to clarify that, you know, without clarifying that, we're gonna have this kind of back and forth between the planning board, design review committee, so that needs to happen, and I think Tricia and Marcelo and, and, and are, are saying, and I agree a hundred percent with the both of you, and I know Tricia and I have sat down with the design review committee and have talked about this face to face, that we need to update the design review committee bylaws, right? Um, and, and so I think that's gonna be our first step. Um, regarding use, Deepa, this is allowed use in that area of town, right? And so we are not allowing, we're not looking at the use per se, we are just looking at the site plan. Does the site plan meet health, welfare, safety of the town of Ashland? And is it a safe site regarding ingress, egress, traffic, public safety, um, pedestrian safety? Those are the things that we're looking at.
We don't really worry about who is the entity, but we're looking at the big picture from.
Correct, now they asked to go to design review and, you know, and, and, and therefore I rescheduled the meeting for the design review. And as Anna kind of stated, as a data gatherer, right, to get opinions of the design review committee. And, and that's where we stand today. I think why are they continuing, I think that's the, the, the question is, is they're continuing because they are working on the ingress and egress in the traffic and the circulation on that site. It's a tough site, it's at probably the top, maybe the busiest intersection in the town of Ashland, maybe the second busiest intersection. Um, as a kind of, you know, a commercial node, uh, within the downtown area. And it's a triangled site, uh, and so you almost have two frontages, one along Summer, one along Union Street. And so therefore, and it's a, and it's a big change in use, right, it's going from a pharmacy to a Starbucks, right, and it's a brand new building, and so at this point the traffic is being analyzed, is being analyzed by, by professionals.
Um, I have a couple of follow-ups, like, because I, I, I think the same concern, and I, I think, um, I'll have to read that bylaw, but perhaps one way, since if it's not clear, um, at least I brought it up, but I think other people were on board of reviewing, looking at updating our application. So that may be, I don't think that, it doesn't have to be Roxelle, but it shouldn't be, I think probably up to the applicant to decide, because also, I mean, we, we know how much time we given, these are people that have other lives, so I, I, it, it kind of pains me to see what we're all saying, it might have to happen again, right? And I feel like that's not a best use of our fellow residents, friends, citizens' time, and that's, I, I I don't really like that, just to be honest, um, and then a follow-up, I, I don't think I saw a decision from the, um, zoning board of appeals, can we get that, just actually the decision, I just think it would be good to have, I keep looking for postings, but I haven't seen it.
I'm happy to get that decision out and, and just to clarify, um, but your comment, if you look at our bylaws, actually, our bylaws state that once application is accepted by the planning office, it first goes to design review prior to going to the planning board for the public meter. And so that is when I'm, when I preaching, not preaching, but stating is that to change the bylaws to make them fit what we want our new process to be, is a, is, is a critical step.
So it's not actually a conflict, and it's not confusing, or I just heard two different things said tonight, so I'll read it, but, um, if it says it has to go, can we design a process at interim until the bylaw changes, that going to means I send a letter as the planning board? We send a letter, if went to you, I'm informing of this project, but we still hold it, and then we will inform you when it what's ready for review, like, we can be creative about that, I think, from what you're saying, and still control that.
I, I think the, I think, and I don't think we spend any more time on it tonight, but I think, and I think we, I think all, everyone, I'm sensing that everyone on the planning, planning board feels kind of the same way, this, this isn't the process that we want. But I also know that I have looked at that, but I can't remember exactly what it says at all. But I know that we've looked at it and tried to figure it out, it's like, oh, I'm not sure this really supports what we want. And so we may need to, you know, make that change happen in order to get the order that we can be efficient, I agree with you, Kate, and, and Marcelo is saying the same thing. That, uh, we may be wasting people's time, sending it, you know, lots of people's time, because this, we're gonna send it back to design review committee if we feel that way about it, right?
In our time.
But I think it's about, but it's also about intentionality, like, if we are clear as to what we want from the applicant and from design review, it may not be a waste. Because if the applicant went back, excuse me, for the first time to design review, just to kind of get their take on things, so that they come to us more prepared, I'm all for it. But I think we're the ones who need to guide the design review committee, that is a committee that we, we chose those folks to assist us, so there's absolutely nothing that I'm aware of that stops this board from sending a letter to the design review committee to say, we understand the applicant wants to be in front of you, we would find it helpful, we, the planning board, the, that you watch our prior meeting video, that you become aware of the issues we raised, and that you utilize your first meeting with them, because there will be more to fill them in to what, you know, to, to details that we highlighted as a planning board. We'd like you to kind of fill that in more, or new items that perhaps we missed, um, but I think we guide them, and
Yeah, just to know.
I'm not sure anything stops us from doing that.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just to, just to note that I don't think that the design review committee requested to see them, right? And I believe, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, when the applicant requested to go design review committee, you didn't feel that there was anything in the bylaws that allowed you to say, no, you can't do that, is that? Though we, so Peter is in a tough place here, so it's something we need to resolve, obviously, because we feel strongly about it. But, um, and, and it kind of highlights that, that ball got dropped a little bit and all the other things that we've been doing, because it has, the design review committee has been an important thing for me since I first started on the planning board, and it's obviously got a lot more work. So, um, so anyway, I will be better about pursuing that to try to, to try to get to try to keep moving that ball forward to get this worked out. I, I am committed to that, because I'm as frustrated as you are, I did not know they were going that way, so. But that said, because we do have a couple other things to discuss tonight, um, we can push this to December, right, Peter? I mean, there's no reason.
I'm happy to.
Because, because November's full, I think November's full, we have a, important things to discuss in that November tenth meeting.
Yeah.
December.
I think December first is appropriate, I mean, the first meeting in December.
First meeting in December, okay. I make a motion to continue the three ninety-nine Union Street hearing till first meeting in December.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote?
Anna Tashman, it's the eye.
Marcelo, I.
Catherine Jersey guy. And Trisha Kendall eye, so that is continued. Um, Peters, there's someone here for Forty Cherry Street?
Yes, David.
Oh, okay.
Coming on the screen.
Oh, hello.
Okay, so. But just to introduce this project in, uh, dates back previous, uh, prior to my arrival in the town of Ashland, but, um, Forty Cherry Street was permitted with a special permit of a site plan to develop a brewery. Uh, and, uh, they received permits from the planning board, and then they received a, um, extension of the permit right before COVID, I think it was about, I think it was, could have been the first meeting we went on Zoom uh, in about twenty twenty, uh, and so, uh, but, uh, excuse me, uh, David and his wife, um, who live at Forty Cherry Street, uh, proposed to develop a brewery in their back structure, I'm gonna call it, um, for lack of a better term. Uh, and I believe David and his wife are here to, uh, update the planning board as what, as a, as, as one of the items in the, uh, continuance and do a permit extension um, as requested by the planning board, uh, and to give update on where they stand and how they're planning to move forward. And, uh, and so with a warm welcome back to the planning board. Uh, I would like to introduce David, and forgive me, I've met you a couple of times, but I can't recall your name, uh, so please introduce yourself, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm David Butanas.
And I'm Isabel Perez.
Yes.
Um, yeah, so as Peter mentioned, um, when we got our approval for, um, this, the permit extension uh, two years ago, one of the things we agreed to is prior to, uh, applying for any permits uh, for the project, that we would come back before the planning board and present a detailed construction schedule, uh, which we submitted to Peter, um, last week. Hopefully you've had a chance to, uh, to look at it, um, and yeah, we are, um, in contact with uh, the building commissioner, Doug Scott, um, ready to submit plans to him um, for our first permit, which would be a demo permit, um, next week. And then as we've, um, kind of outlined in this document, um, we foresee about a eleven to twelve month um, construction schedule, uh, for the project with occupancy in October of, uh, twenty twenty-three. Tricia, you're on mute.
Peter, is that something you can bring up on your screen? It'd be good to show, it, it, just quickly show the site plan if it's convenient and the, um, and the construction schedule?
I, first, maybe share with everybody the construction schedule. David and Isabel, please feel free and, and, and work your way through, and obviously I will, uh, I will not, but I will grab the approved site plan
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last part?
I'll, I'll, I'll grab the approved site plan once complete, and we can run through what that's gonna detail to the board.
Sure, yeah, I mean, essentially, the, the, the footprint, uh, the site plan isn't changing. Um, we're sticking to the plan that we, uh, submitted and that we received approval on. Um, so this is just to basically let the planning board know that, um, this project is a go and, and will be before, um, our permit expires, um, and we are very much looking forward to it.
This is kind of a very brief construction schedule, just as they kind of get going. Uh, but I am going to grab the site plan.
Yes, it looked like it went from early November to late October next year, basically a year in time for opening up for Oktoberfest, or? Were there any other, Peter, um, were there any other conditions of this approval, which is before my time as well? That, that relate to the planning board, was it just about the construction schedule, was there anything else that we need to take care of, or?
Uh, there's one thing to note, I will just say is that as part of the permit, um, I'm just gonna grab this, as part of the permit, um, there's that parking, that little right now, it's a gravel parking area or, or gravel yard, uh, right down the corner of Tilton and Cherry Street, which are about the train tracks. Uh, the town has always thought and proposed, uh, wait, excuse me, right now the town is laying down, it's the lay down area for the new traffic lights in the town, in the, for the downtown project. But that, um, that area is, was, 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 prior to their permit was seen by the town as a good area for additional parking downtown, so as part of the permit, um, the applicant in this case is going to grant twenty thousand dollars to the town of Ashland to help design a parking lot on that site, and so obviously that payment is still to come. Um, and, uh, and it just, that was kind of a, a one-off condition, which I was about to bring up and mention. I'm just gonna zoom in on the approved site plan, so, uh, can everyone see this? Uh, so just for a reference, this back corner, right here where my, my, my cursor is, that is the back door to Town Hall. As, as everybody kind of coming up and um, my cursor over here would represent the, the corner spot. Cherry Street is right here, and then this is the parking lot of Town Hall. Obviously, one proposed parking space is removed, and this becomes the main entrance to the Ashland Blue Cafe. The number of Cherry Forty Street comes from a residential house, Forty Cherry Street.
Is the, um, is the demolition that's happening all basically interior demolition, because you said you were keeping the buildings, right?
Exactly.
I forget, what is the use of the building right now?
It was originally a, um, a box making company, and then it was, uh, basically a storage space for a roofing company. And right now, it's, uh, our son's, uh, hoverboard area.
Okay.
Alright, so any questions from the planning board? This is just a, a report, um, that's required in the conditions that they can, uh, go forward with their project. Anna, did, I just saw you.
I don't have any, any questions.
Yeah, I'm excited to see it go, you know, obviously, we've heard about it for literally years now, because of COVID and everything, and I'm but, but I'm sure no one is more excited than you guys are to, to get going with this, so, um, good luck, and as we're in Town Hall, frequently, we'll be watching the so.
Yeah, we're excited too, um, it's been a long time coming, but there's light at the end of the tunnel, which is great.
Yeah.
Tr- Tricia, this is just a report, that we need to vote on this, or?
This, this has already, uh, been approved by the planning board, and, um, it was on, they had asked for an extension because of COVID. Um, and they are still within the deadline set by that extension, so part.
So we're good.
Yeah, we're just saying, good luck and go for it.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Take care.
It's very interesting, the location, right next to Town Hall, it kind of implies that maybe some of these positions might be ones where you need to chill out, you know, after, after work.
Maybe, maybe when we meet, when we meet in person, that's, uh, that's the next step, right?
That's right, right, it's right next to where you parked your car, you know?
You go before or after, that's the only question.
Yeah, yeah.
Can they pour you a draft in a coffee mug?
It would have been the first or the last time.
Um, if, so next, next on our list is just our normal topics and things, except we knew, do need to focus on comprehensive plan, so i- if there's any, um, if there's anything else besides comprehensive plan to, that anyone wants to comment on, um, why don't we do that first, and then you know, anything immediate or anything that need, anyone needs to report on, otherwise we'll get to comprehensive plan and spend our time there.
Only thing I'll report on is I understand that the Shaw's project is gonna be heard soon by the planning board, I believe I'm a direct to butter, so we're gonna have to repeat the Pawn, the five oh one Pawn Street uh, process, so that Kevin will have to step into my shoes, and I just wanted to remind everyone to start, to remember to exclude me from those discussions over email. So that when I get things from Peter and Emma, typically on Pawn Street, they try to separate out the emails. The last couple of five oh one Pawn Street emails, I was included, so I just wanted to remind The last couple of five oh one Pond Street emails, I was included, so I just wanted to remind everybody that if I'm in a butter and excluding myself from the project, to try to keep me off of those emails, both for, for Pond Street and for the upcoming Shaw's project.
Are you sure yet that you are in a butter?
I believe so, I think Peter confirmed that.
Okay.
Um, I think you have to live within a certain number of feet and uh, all the buildings around me are moving and expanding, but mine keeps standing where it is. So I am um, in fact, in a butter and I'm sure Kevin will do an excellent job stepping into my shoes and we move forward.
What some people won't do for a break, right? Why can't a project be near me, you know?
Just a note, you know, when, when the condo complexes are selected, you're selected one big entire parcel, right? So obviously Anna is a bud, she physically lives three hundred feet, she may or may not, however, Anna owns a percentile of all the condos, as a shared percentile of condo association, right? And so therefore, she does trigger them.
A teeny tiny, teeny tiny section. I feel like the moratorium is all about me. We're gonna, we're gonna stop building around me. So, but yes, I will, I will respectfully uh, do, follow the same process, same procedure. That's my report.
Okay, alright, so nothing else on the list or, or, or in the other category that someone wants to bring up?
Is there any, on a, a timeline for the sewer report?
I am going to try to schedule Greg Eldridge, um, I'm gonna try to shoot for that December, the first meeting in December. Very similar to what we had tonight with Jim, Jim Adams, I thought that was very helpful to give Greg, to see if Greg can come and talk for the first half hour meeting and then kind of jump into the other op- op- options there. So I think that, that hopefully would be it. Now, obviously that meeting already, it, it, it's filled up, I would say at this point, so um, and so we'll kind of continue on, but uh, I, I would like to get him in before the meeting.
And just I guess while we're at this, so um, we've been saying the first meeting in December, but um, we're good now with December first and December fifteenth, a shift, a shift one week back. We're, because of Thanksgiving, we won't be meeting two weeks in a row or anything like that, but I think that's the, the uh, email Peter sent out to try to confirm that, so we, can we confirm that now that we're December first and December fifteenth, instead of the eighth and the twenty-third or something like that?
It would have been the eighth and the twenty-second, uh, which is obviously a few days before Christmas, so.
Yeah, so everyone's good with that?
It sounds good.
Okay, first and fifteenth, be there or be square.
Yeah, we'll check that off the box.
Okay, so comprehensive plan, um, there was the select board meeting at last night. Anna and I were there in person, um, Deepa and Kate were um, online. So um, the, the, the big takeaway is that we have now, I think slightly less than three weeks before town meeting. Um, I think that the warrant uh, has been, has been written, right, Peter? Cause it was due, the warrant has been submitted.
Yep.
Yeah. So which would be taking two hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, out of free cash is where um, Michael Herbert Select Board is looking for that money. Um, I think the select board, I would say across the board, everyone uh, can tell me if they didn't get the same sense, but I got the sense that everyone on the select board was feeling that this needs to be done, that they were on board with the, with the comprehensive plan, no one seemed to hesitate about the, about funding it, uh, which I thought was great. And um, it's just about uh, kind of next steps, which I think in part Anna, maybe I'll turn it over to you, which is about um, presenting it or understanding it well enough ourselves to present it accurately at town meeting.
Yeah, I, that's a great summary, the only things I was gonna add uh, for context to Marcelo and Kevin is that I, I sense that there was some understanding of the importance of the timing of the comprehensive plan relative to um, the moratorium, not just the sewer moratorium, but the building moratorium. So at the next town meeting in November, the community will be asked to evaluate the, the proposal for a building moratorium, right? Um, and the timing of the comprehensive plan is important. So one of the things we discussed, and I believe there was consensus, is that we wanted to make sure, as much as we could, the comprehensive plan process would be completed prior to the moratorium ending. However, um, the town manager did state that it doesn't mean that the moratorium has to end. If we need extra time, the moratorium could in theory be extended. But my takeaway from the meeting was that there was some consensus on those points, the importance of getting this done and that uh, the moratorium, if anything, I think motivates us to act efficiently and to actually focus on the next two years to make this happen. Our homework, if you will, was to see if we could come up with a more precise timeline that was not too specific. Um, I think there was consensus that we did not want months, we did not even want quarters. We didn't want to tie ourselves down to the exact like, ooh, on March one, we're gonna do such and such thing. Um, but that we did want to be able, as two boards, to have a timeline of commitment, so that w- both boards are empowered and responsible for the completion of a comprehensive plan document. We talked about how the prior comprehensive plan plan, that, that the planning board created, if you recall, in February of this year, was quite lengthy. And the sense I got was that we didn't want to get lost in the weeds of it. And I had promised that I would try for tonight to turn uh, a key section of it into one page. That delineates a timeline and a much more detailed um, kind of to-do list of how this is gonna happen, while honoring all the different elements of the more wider planning elements. If you recall, the comprehensive plan document from the planning board only focused on the statutory elements. And then the select board's um, expansion, added additional elements. And so what I've, what I did in kind of getting this homework done um, is I took our original, the planning board's document, I focused on the timeline. I placed it into a one-page document, got rid of dates that were specific months and quarters. Um, added those elements to honor every single element in the select board's version. Um, and I tried to create a document that was short and could be utilized by the two boards uh, to have a timeframe. Um, so to kind of walk through the document, and I, I will add, I, I think Tricia suggested yesterday at the select board meeting that I run this by Kate. I reached out to Kate prior to the meeting, she took a peek at it. Um, and so her input, I've implemented into the document for a full disclosure. So it's based upon what we voted on before, but like I said, I got rid of specific dates, months um, and added the select board elements. So the way this is written, um, it's meant to be a document that we then bring back to the select board, hopefully they like it. And then hopefully it can be turned into beautiful slides that would be presented to town meeting, so that when we're asking for the quarter million dollars for the consultant, we're giving the public something that they are engaged with, they understand what we're asking for the money. They understand we're committed to a timeframe, we have a plan to how we're gonna succeed. Um, and we are also able to market, if you will, brand what we're doing, so that the public is truly engaged, right? Um, so that's the purpose of it. Did I miss anything, Tricia, or do you feel like I've misstated something?
No, no, I think, I think that's a, that was a good summary, so.
Okay, so it starts with, and you guys, I literally wrote this uh, in about twenty minutes. Kate gave me fifteen minutes of input, so it was very, very fast. Um, you know, it was a cut and paste, if you will, from our prior document, just kind of squished in and condensed. So I'm sure there's gonna be changes, um, but generally twenty twenty-two, this year, the concept is that there is a project management team that's formed. If you remember, the project management team has two select board members, two planning board members, uh, town staff, et cetera. So the project management team, in theory, would be formed this year, so that they could start their work. If you remember, um, the project management team uh, drafts the RFP and also forms the steering committee, right? So in, I'm assuming that would happen in early next year. Um, if town meeting is in November and the project management team is formed, let's say, end of November, December, and the work on the drafting of the RFP begins, um, this gives us some wiggle room, so that the RFP is drafted, the steering committee is formed as part one of early twenty twenty-three. Part two, if you remember, twenty twenty-three is the data gathering year. So typically, the comprehensive planning happens in two years. You have a year of data gathering and a year of writing. So twenty twenty-three is the da- data gathering year that has those two parts, the formation of the leadership committees and the steering committee. Then there's quite a bit of public dialogue. Some of you might remember the statute on comprehensive plan is all about public dialogue. These are some of the elements of public dialogue that communities utilize, public workshops, surveys, online input forums. I think the select board likes the idea of precinct involvement, both in the steering committee and perhaps in um, the dialogue. So I included those elements of how we might seek public input for the data gathering. And then I started to think about long-term vision of how would we make this successful, right? So you'll see me using the term ribbon, and the reason I came up with that concept of ribbons um, is of the branding component. And if Peter allows it, I'll share my screen, but you'll see many communities come up with a brand visual for its comprehensive plan. A lot of communities use um, symbols, color, ideas to sort of present um, a visual to the public of what a comprehensive plan is. And Peter, do I have permission to share my screen? So I can kind of demonstrate that very briefly?
Yeah, one minute.
Um, let me know when.
Do you?
So, okay, uh, can you tell me what I click on?
I need to stop sharing my screen.
Oh, thank you, so then I should sorry, guys, Zoom is not my friend sometimes, I'm more used to Teams. How do I share screen? Share screen, here we go, look at that. Yeah, share screen and I can choose to share it, excellent. Can you guys see that screen at all?
Yes.
So, uh, so these are obviously some, some kind of, you know, examples of how other communities brand its comprehensive plan process. Um, and what I noticed as a theme is a lot of kind of colorful presentations of public participation, right? Um, some communities, you know, design branding based on their specific community, like, you know, something that might be um, specific to what the community is known for. Um, but you know, we, obviously, I, nobody's an expert in marketing better than what, who we have for staff. Um, but the concept would be that whatever visual that we share with our town could be um, how we present these different focus points to the public. So if Peter could go back to sharing the, the one pager, I had come up with this idea of ribbons, right? So that perhaps there are different colors for each um, each component of the comprehensive plan, different ribbons that the community starts to recognize as um, part of what the comprehensive plan is, and that could be part of our branding, if you will, for the symbol for the comprehensive plan. So ribbon one are things that, in my mind, and I would love to hear the views of the board, are extremely connected to the moratorium. These are big picture ticket items that really drive uh, where we are as a community. Community vision, housing, land use, open space and recreation, downtown Pond Street. And this was my reaction to Kate's comment at the select board yesterday that we should think about the comprehensive plan as prioritizing elements, handling the tough stuff first, that might directly impact the moratorium more efficiently. So that is called ribbon one. Ribbon two is some of the key elements um, that really, really connect to resources, to what we have in our community um, as far as resource use. So you can see all of those elements. Um, ribbon three, in my mind, is something that occurs towards the end, when we truly understand where we are. Um, and I will add that a lot of these elements belong in everywhere else, right? There's gonna be a lot of intermixing of these elements. Um, economic development could go everywhere, right? Community engagement truly is everywhere, but these elements are sections that have to be written. There are sections that have to be data gathered, there are sections that have to have focus. So we need to put them in some sort of category, so that we can properly implement them and organize our thoughts and our work. Um, and again, I was responding to some of that feedback from Kate from last night about what order do we want to do these in, how do we want to frame our work when we gather data for an entire year, right? What goes first, what goes second, what goes third? Um, and how do these things inter, interrelate? So then we move on to the twenty twenty-four year, which is the year of drafting. And most communities will draft the initial elements first. And I'll give an example of what that means in a moment. And then they do a second section, which is the action and implementation piece. So the writing component, the writing year would be broken down into three parts. Part one is the initial drafting um, of the elements, part two would be sort of a stop to evaluate how things are going, to make sure all the initial drafting together makes sense, how it influences each section. And then part three is the, the action implementation draft. And obviously, at the end of twenty twenty-four or early twenty twenty-five, the draft is presented to the planning board and select board and the moratorium is evaluated. So this is kind of the general breakdown of, of the process, the timeline in one page. Um, I know that's a lot of material, so I wanted to give you guys a live example of what this might look like in a draft form. Um, and I'll share my screen again, if that, if that's okay, just to kind of offer the planning board an example of what does drafting look like? What is a, you know, big picture, what does it mean to draft a, something in two pieces, right? Um, and I'm gonna use the town of Bedford, Bedford's presentation that they presented at their town meeting, when they were doing the same exercise that we're about to do, where they were showing the town, the community, what a comprehensive plan is and what their planning process would look like for the plan. Let's see if I can do this now.
Is this thought, what you're saying, what we would show at town meeting, you mean?
Um, well, I, I wanna, maybe, I, so I wanna, I wanna use it more, I don't know how familiar all of us are as to what it means to write something in two pieces and what it, what are these different elements? How do they look? And I just wanted to show one slide from their presentation. Ultimately, whatever presentation we make is really up to the select board and us together. What I'm envisioning is this one-page document would get feedback from you guys today. We would present it to the select board at their next meeting, they would have to be comfortable with that one-page document. And that one-page document becomes part of, if you recall, the select board and Michael had a good sort of introduction to what a comprehensive plan is. And then Tricia and the, the board, the planning board, kind of redrafted all the different roles. So there's a page right there, and this would be the last page. The page I just showed you guys would be the last page of, of that presentation, if you will, um, between the select board and the planning board. Whether we choose to show it to the public in slides is a whole other conversation that I think belongs with the planning, with the select board and the planning board. Um, the one slide, yeah.
I think it, it actually is gonna, um, it, it's gonna depend on, um, Adam Schuster. He's gonna make the decision about how many slides are allowed and how long we're a, we're able to talk. And you can expect it to be extremely minimal.
Absolutely.
Runs a tight ship.
Yeah, and I, and I think I may be confusing us, so, so the page that I showed you guys today is something that's meant to go back to the select is something that's meant to go back to the select board for their input as part of our agreement with the select board, right? The planning board and select board are trying to agree to a process. That's what that one page that I showed you is. If we then decide altogether to turn that one page into a PowerPoint, I'm all for it. The PowerPoint I'm about to show you, I'm not going to show you the whole thing. I just wanted to show you one slide to illustrate my point about the importance of a timeline and how we would succeed in breaking down the writing. So I just want to show you that one slide more for our benefit in discussing that one-page document, not because I'm saying this is what the slide should be. That's not really my decision until, you know, we, we talk and we figure this out. So, let me see if I can share the screen. One participant, looks different, sorry. There we go. Okay. So the slide I wanted to show you guys was this one right here. So this is an example of, of an element of what would be in a comprehensive plan. Obviously, this is an oversimplification, but I thought it's a helpful one. So a typical comprehensive plan would look at an element of the statute. So the statutory element might be land use, right? So the community together would recognize the opportunity, the issue, that's number one. And then the community would come up with goals and strategies. And then the community would come up with actions, right, and identify participants. This is what a comprehensive plan is, doing these steps for every single element of the statute. So in, in my one page where I'm breaking down the writing, right? Part one of it would be the issues, opportunities, goals. And part two of it is the strategies and the action plan, right? Because you can't necessarily write all of that all together. So I just wanted to show this slide because I thought it was an excellent oversimplification of the process. That's very, very helpful to see as to what a comprehensive plan actually does. And that's my presentation. I don't know if anybody has questions, but that was it.
I think the, do you want to go back to the text? I, I really like the idea of these ribbons, you know? And I think it makes sense to connect, you know, to break down the many, many categories into, okay, what do we concentrate on first? I think that's what we talked about last night, that those, those things do seem to, I mean, you can, you can make overlap between any of these categories, right? But I think those are the ones in the moratorium that, that do seem to kind of fit together that we have to make sure we address first. I mean, so I think that makes sense. And I like the idea of, like I said, these ribbons, these, because none of these things stand alone. Housing doesn't stand alone, separate from land use, right? They, they, they work together. And so, and there's some kind of flow in that, in that image of a ribbon too. So I think, I think that works really well. The one thing I just didn't, in ribbon three, where it says, "Community engagement", I think you might need to need a different term for that because you use community engagement so much. And I'm getting confused, like, oh, wait.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're done with community engagement by that time.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point. So the, the term "community engagement", DEI, is right out of Michael's document. That's, that's a term of art as to the equity component, that it's really important to our town, right? So I, I like your point. I think the rest of the document, when I say "community input", maybe we'll just say "input" or "public input".
Yeah, "public input", so it's really completely different.
Exactly. It's an excellent point because the ribbons are meant to be the official lingo of the statute and the strategic elements that, that Michael and the select board added. And you're right, that we should not confuse the official ribbons with public input, right?
Yeah. And the only other thing I would say, because I, I think this is a really good summary of the, based on what we, everyone was throwing out there last night, that it's specific but not locked in, right? And, and just the unknown quantity, which I think Brandy was trying to allude to last night, that, you know, you can prepare for a, a 10-minute intro, but you have to, you have to be ready for two minutes and two slides. And then that's it on the, on the comprehensive plan during town meeting. You just don't, I, I don't know when Adam makes those decisions. Or, you know, or, or you ask, you ask for what you want, and then he, he makes it. But it's his decision on how much time he allows for, for whatever. And how, if he even allows you to have slides or us to have slides.
Totally. And, and to be clear, this page is not the slide presentation. This page is our planning board, select board agreement as to what are we committing ourselves to? What is our vision for the consultant? What is our vision for our timeline? This document is not what I see going to the public.
Okay.
Although it should be a public document because presumably, Michael's document, Tricia, your document, and this document can all be squished together, ultimately into a document that represents the select boards and the planning boards' collaborative vision for the process, right?
Yeah, and you can have a handout, you know, you can have a handout, you know?
Exactly.
So, but yeah, I think, I think it's a really good summary and compression of what we, of what we've been talking about. So that, that's crazy. 24 hours.
And I, and I think if the select board likes it, you know, I, I would love to brainstorm with, with town staff and figure out how we might use this ribbon image so that we start branding ourselves. You know, I found consultants who actually specialize in branding for comprehensive plans. Obviously, we can't afford that. But we, we have staff who can market and create a vision, right? Some sort of symbol with these ribbons, if we like it. And, you know, maybe I'm going off, off the deep end, but I, I think part of the public engagement is to give the public that visual. And the ribbons could be symbolic, or they could be literal. We could have, as a community, we could have physical ribbons for every category, different colors, different shapes. We could even engage the public by saying, hey, you come to one of these meetings, public workshops, you get a ribbon for, you get ribbon one, you get ribbon two, you get ribbon three. You can collect them. We can have a social media campaign around them to get the public excited about being part of this. I can see kids getting into it, right? If, if they want to go to the education forum, they can have an education ribbon. So we can have some fun with this as a community and make, make this a branding exercise as well as a way to engage the public.
So what do we need to get done tonight? I mean.
I think, I think the feedback from you guys is really important. We, as a planning board, need to like this document. This is the document that I, you know, we pushed for last night as, or I did severely, where I was like, this, we need, we need a timeline, we need a commitment, right? We need something on paper that we're saying, this is our process. So I would, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board of this, this engages you, if this works for you, if you like it. And then I would think we'd give it back to the select board for their next meeting. Maybe we can go again to that meeting and wrap this up so that this, the slideshow work can start. I think there were a couple of select board members who were interested in a collaborative slideshow work effort once we know more about the town meeting capacity for slides. But this is step one, right? We need to get the select board on board, and we need to know if the rest of the board here is on board.
Any, any comments for the rest of the board?
I, I stepped out for a second, but no, in general, I agree with you, Tricia. I think the idea of the ribbons and organizing the, the pieces in understandable kind of sections. I, I think that idea is brilliant and it could be probably refined as, as we go along. But, but I think in general, it's, I have no, no problem with it. I think it's, I think you summarized it well, Anna.
Deepa, Kevin, Kate? I think Kate liked it because I threw it at Kate earlier, and I was like, here, what do you think? Sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
I think it makes a lot of sense as a, as a general outline. And we know that, you know, in step one, we hired consultants who's the expert at this and starts, you know, adding what's under all this to, what do we really need to do to make it happen? So I, I think it's a great outline to be able to check back in on as, as the whole thing progresses.
Peter, can you scroll down to the end of it?
Yes.
Yeah, great, okay. And to go along with this, we had the, there were the very few changes to the structure that we had set up. Did everyone, are, are we comfortable with that document as, as it stood?
Yeah, I really liked it. I think it was very clear.
Because if we're in agreement with that document and this timeline and, and them working together, then we can give clear direction to the select board, like, we're good with these two things. Because I think they were very open to a timeline. Like, basically, you basically literally said, give us something to look at.
Yeah.
You know, so I think they're, you know, so if we feel that, that we're good, they probably will too. Deepa, do you have?
No, I think this is a, thank you, Anna, for all the hard work. Even though you said it was just 20 minutes, there's a lot of thought that has gone into it. So it's really very well crafted. So thank you for all that.
No problem.
Extra effort within 24 hours. So I think this is a great step for the short time that we have.
No worries. And like I said, I, I think Tricia's point is a good one, that the section we're looking at now, the 2024 section, I'll get rid of the words "community input", and I'll make it "public input" so that it doesn't get confused with the earlier "community engagement" component. So I'll get Peter another draft without the public, you know, without the community input all over the place. It'll be "public input" on the bottom. Do we need to vote on this, Tricia, or are we good?
Um, I think it's okay if we take an official vote, then we can say we did and.
Perfect, yeah.
We looked at it.
Can we, do we, can we combine that with the other one? So it's a package, because that's been a little bit of my frustration, like, I don't, I, I can feel comfortable now. That was what I was looking for, but the pieces make me uncomfortable. So if we say those two pieces we're voting on and we're sending that back to the select board, not, not that I don't trust that piece got lost, but it feels better, it feels like more.
Yeah, I like that a lot, actually, so that it's really clear. Because to me, I was not feeling too, I loved all of it together. I, I, the timeline for me is where it's at. That's the heart of the, the meat of it is, is the timeline for me because I feel like that's the vision that we need to present to the consultants so that we feel assured that this is ours, that this is the community's effort. So I love the idea of combining, you know, the Tricia piece with this piece so that it's all together as a package.
Yeah, and I think the part we're leaving out, which is Michael's original, like, the beginning part, I, I have it in front of me, it really is just an introduction. It's about the different statutes. Why do we need a new plan? What have we learned in the past? It's not about what we're doing now. It's just a summary of what happened before. And so I don't think that needs to be a part of, this is our, this is our action plan, these two documents, you know?
Agreed.
So.
Agreed.
And what I liked about what Anna's really created at this point is the fact that it takes away which board is doing what and then really focuses on the milestones of this whole journey versus talking about whether the select board is doing this or planning board is doing this. So, and so I think that's what I liked about this, is like, just takes away that noise and really clarifies what is that intent of this comprehensive plan? What are we trying to get to? So I think this is a great effort. Thank you, Anna.
No worries.
My one small question is, there was that one line that got added yesterday about the final presentation to the housing board. Is that a timeline that's really important, critical in any way, that we should kind of close this?
I mean, as long as, I mean, as long as that document, Tricia's document with that change is the first page of this, I think we're good, right? This is almost like a condensed version of it. I mean, we, we could add that little line right between, you know how it says "draft present, presented to pub"? We could add a line that says "vote and presentation to state agency". We could, just to.
Well, does that timeline really matter? That's what I was getting at, that it's like, is that something that is going to really break or make the?
I don't think so. As long as Tricia's document is page one of this, I think the two of them go together, and we're, we're not going to lose that piece. It's not, that piece of it doesn't disappear, right? I, I don't think this erases Tricia's document in any way. It's, it's a supplement to give a very specific, big-picture level, really above the, above the trees, above the forest view of how are we going to actually do this over two years?
Awesome.
Right?
All right, then, if, if everyone's good, it sounds like everyone is. We can take a formal vote that we will combine this with the structure document, I'll, I'll call it, about the steering committee and whatever. And to, you know, after Anna's changes discussed, that will make one, two-page document to give it to the select board. So I will make a motion that we, that we, as a planning board, are approving this two-page document.
I'll second it. I think it's safe for me to do that.
Sure. It's, it's kind of an, it's not a public hearing, so we can be a little looser about it. But we will have a roll call vote.
Deepa and Gaddai.
Anna Testman, it's the I.
I said, oh, I.
Catherine, there's a guy.
Kevin?
Okay, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So, all right, we have a document. And the only other thing, we're meeting on the, this is the meeting minutes, did?
I forgot to send those out, and so.
Yeah, I couldn't find them.
I meant to send them out, the, and everything, just.
Just made my evening, oh.
Thank you, Peter.
Someone was the least I could have done, right?
Any closing comments? The next time we do have a meeting, like, on November 7th, for those able to attend, again, this is the 10 to 60 main. Roll up your sleeves, think about massing in terms of design and hopefully kick that project down the, I know, progress a little bit. At least explore some new ideas. That's at 6 o'clock in Town Hall, Monday the 7th, in person. Other than that, we meet on November 10th for our next regular meeting.
When is the next select board meeting? Because now that we finished that document, it will go to the select board. Can we get this document to them for that next meeting? And when will it be? And would they want us to be there?
So they typically meet, I can follow up. Once I send, once I get the document and, and enter, I just changed the word.
Yep. I saw that. Looks great. You're done. Yep.
If that's all you're looking to do, I'll take care of the rest.
Yeah, you did.
I'll send it to the select board, and they typically meet, I think it's always the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. So that would put them on the ninth.
Are they, did they switch at all like we did? Are they sticking with their?
No, it sounded like yesterday they mentioned 9th.
Okay.
I think they're going on the 9th, and I don't know if they're switching to December.
I think we, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm thinking about December.
Do we want to try to do another two-board discussion so that we can wrap up this document and start doing the slides? Or, you know, how do we want to do that?
I will ask them, I do not know what's on their agenda. I do, obviously, that is their last agenda, even up to town meeting. So they may be doing others, other stuff dependent on town meeting on the 16th. But I will, I will ask Michael Herbert that question.
Yeah.
Um, I, what about that we vote, take a vote on a subcommittee if that, like, one or two of us working, one or two of them? So it doesn't get lost and stressful to make it happen, right? Or it's not, it's not on one person to get a presentation for town. So we simply, assuming that they, that board also approves of what we're sending, let's say that happens. Maybe we could say at least vote to, to approve a subcommittee, and it may or may not happen, but that way it's, it's a possibility.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with me, just so we have a game plan ahead. You know, these two people are going to be working on the slide presentation with the select board. Do we have volunteers?
I mean, I'm happy to.
I nominate Anna, because obviously, there's been the force behind all this, so it's just natural.
I'm happy to do it. It'd be good to get somebody with a visual eye who can make it pretty and get some ribbons in there. I don't know if, if Peter, if there's someone on town staff who'd be willing to help brand this thing so we can start coming up with a little visual. Visual.
I will, I'm happy to help. Emma is, excuse me, Emma is happy to help too. Emma and I have a great, we help. I would like to nominate. Ashley Place, who is our. However, Ashley is going to be out of the office on because she's expecting. So she is the person that has that visual touch and. Into her digital toolbox, however, her time in town hall is limited.
Understood.
So I will do the best that we can and 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 we can do the best that we can and if. If I have to make a phone call to Deepa, then we make a phone call to.
Yeah, I mean, if someone if someone is crafty and and can design something, it might be good to think about. So who else is volunteering other than Pete and Deepa to be crafty and me? The three of us?
I'm not crafty, but I would, I guess, just because maybe we don't need this subcommittee. I'm just saying, let's leave the option because it's getting squished on time. So I I could volunteer. If if needed, another another country heard from when we're meeting with the select board about sort of initial plan about how to present that or whatever.
Do we need to formally vote on this concept?
Probably. I don't know. We've never formed a subcommittee before.
So a subcommittee to create ribbons?
That's necessary, but I think that volunteering is clear. I think you guys are going to do a great job anyways.
Okay, so it sounds like we have consensus and maybe we should do a formal vote that if the select board does not have time. For us to come before them, but they approve our document that we.
And work.
Form some kind of group that will work with them to draft the slides if they're permitted.
Yeah, I'm exactly. Okay, I'm I'm sure you'll get some people, but we will. Okay, so I will make a motion that we have Anna and Kate. Forming a subcommittee to work on the presentation of the comprehensive plan for town meeting. All right, and a roll call vote.
Anna Testman, it's I.
Kevin. And Tricia Kendall, I, we officially have a for our first subcommittee in, to my knowledge. So, all right, so thank you for that quick turnaround. I think Marcelo is about to fall asleep.
Yeah, I'm up since four in the morning.
All right. So on that note. Twenty six P M. Perfect. I am going to second that roll call vote.
Anna Testman, it's I.
And Tricia Kendall, I, we are out of here. All right, thank you, everybody.